Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, sorry. I have the wrong agenda in front of me. Can I borrow your agenda? Not that one. Michael, can I borrow yours? Thanks. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 7th, 2017, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order. Our meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org, and all the issues with livestreaming have been worked out, so hopefully that should go smoothly tonight. If anyone has any issues with that, please let us know or get in touch with LCTV directly. It is also a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no correspondence to record tonight and no minutes to approve tonight. Do we have any visitor comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Do we have any school committee announcements this evening?
I don't know. I mean, I know that we have like comments at the end, but I disturb by the day's events. I feel like I want to say something. Okay, do it now? Okay, I'll do it now.
Great.
Thanks. I just, you know, I want to express my deep disappointment with the Senate's vote to confirm Betsy DeVos today as Education Secretary.
Oh, I hadn't even heard that, Michael. Okay.
Yeah, that's where we're going with this.
How long is your?
I'll keep it brief.
Okay, okay.
You know, I know that members of this committee have expressed in the past that we should avoid focusing on national politics in our debates in front of this committee, but I feel like this occasion warrants a discussion about the concerns I think that most of us do share.
Yeah.
The budget that we're going to hear tonight contains nearly a million dollars in federal IDA funding. It contains funding from Title I and Title II, and previously this committee has received, or the district has received, race-to-the-top funding in ARRA money. And yet, all of that funding tonight is in jeopardy because Senate Republicans voted to appoint a person to the highest education post in the country who has no experience with public schools, who has no interest in supporting the mission of public schools. Instead, the Senate voted to confirm a person who believes that those tax dollars, our tax dollars, are better spent on vouchers for private and religious schools. She believes that our money is better spent on charter schools, those very same charter schools that the voters in this community and across the state resoundingly voted to oppose in the November election. She has said that she believes that, the Secretary of Education has said that she believes that we should have guns in our schools. She doesn't understand the difference between proficiency and growth, two indicators that our students are measured on, on the MCAS exam. She doesn't understand that the Individuals with Disabilities Act is a federal law that she is required to enforce, and she does not believe that equal accountability should be applied to every school across the board. And frankly, I'm appalled that Senate Republicans would put our students' future at risk, and that's exactly what this vote has done today. More than anything else, it has put our students' futures in jeopardy, and it has put their access to a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment at risk. And this is a, you know, and this type of political tactic, as unsurprising it is, is part of a 40-year campaign on the part of congressional Republicans to erode the public's trust in the very agencies that have been designed to assist them. And it's why unqualified people like Mrs. DeVos have been nominated to lead agencies of extreme importance, because when those agencies fail, when their missions are incomplete, it allows Congress to then turn around and say that, "See, we told you. You know, we didn't need a Federal Department of Education to begin with." But I would encourage this board and our community to not be fooled, because those people who are going to be the most impacted by these tactics are not the federal employees that work in those agencies, but it's going to be the students that that agency serves. So, you know, I would kind of ask the committee, what are we going to do? You know, are we going to sit here and hope that the money continues to flow into these programs that are important, the programs that we're talking about here tonight in our budget hearing? The budget that supports student learning in our classrooms, regardless of their ability and regardless of what our students look like, or what they believe, or who they love? Are we going to allow those to be put in jeopardy because 51 people in Washington decided someone with zero qualifications should be running our public schools? I mean, I think we all know the answer to that. The answer to that is, of course, no. So, I believe that it's our job to continue to come here every single day and to stand with our teachers and our students and our parents and our administrators to fight for those values that we hold dear. It's our job to make sure that our public schools and our public school teachers and our public school students have every resource they need to get the job done and to prove that those cynics who would disagree with us, wrong, that our public schools are our country's greatest resource. I think that we need to remind those cynics, when they say that they don't support public education, we need to remind them that when we decided we wanted to send a man to the moon, it was a guy from a public school in Worcester who invented the rocket. When we wanted to cure polio, it was Jonas Sacks that attended a New York public school. When we want to pull out our cellphones and make calls, it was Steve Jobs who attended a public school in Los Gatos. So this is about values to me, and I hope it's about values to you, and it's about our future. And I think that it's our job on this committee, and it's our job in these roles, to give our students every single opportunity to succeed. So, when those people say that they don't support our teachers, we need to remind them that our teachers are our greatest resource. And when they say that they want our money to go to private schools and religious schools, we need to remind them that this is a government that has been established for the people and by the people, and that we should not give up on that promise to our students. And, you know, you can mark my words that I will stand proudly with the Mass Teachers' Association, the Mass Association of School Committees and School Superintendents to oppose every single attack on public education that's thrown at us by this administration, and I hope that all of you will stand there and do the same with me. So, thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Michael.
Got it.
John?
I'd like to go on record as sharing Michael's concern. I think this is a bad day for public education, and it's not just an opinion. I think it's incontrovertible fact, not alternative facts, but true facts, okay? At the same time, I want to thank Senator Warren and Senator Markey for their questioning of her credentials and their defense of public education. It was a close vote. It took a historic, tie-breaking vote by the Vice President to secure the nomination for her. I actually have a letter from the Vice President, believe it or not. I'm on the mailing list. He says, "Betsy DeVos will have great impact as Secretary of Education. It doesn't matter whether it's a public school, a private school, a parochial school, a charter school, or any other kind of school." I don't know what other kinds there are.
[laughing]
Schools are fish, okay? "She will help ensure that every student has access to a good school." Well, we'll see about that, but I'd like to thank again Senator Warren and Senators Markey for supporting public education. Thank you.
Let me do the budget now.
Yeah, no, I'm glad, I am glad that we recognize that. I didn't watch the news today, so I didn't realize that was confirmed today. And it's very disappointing, and I do wish we'd had a little bit more of a chance to talk about it as a committee, but I think, you know, Michael's statements were very valuable, and I think we need to make sure that we're watching what's going on and speaking out. Even as a little school committee, it's really, you know, the grassroots that matters and making sure that school committees across the nation are speaking up, so I really hope we'll do that. Does anyone else have anything to say on that topic or any other announcements tonight? We will move on to the presentation of the 2018 school budget. First, I wanted to let everybody know that our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Tom Mazza, is not here with us tonight. He had a family emergency that he had to attend to, so it's unfortunate, and I hope everything will be okay with Tom and his family, but he will not be here this evening. And Dr. O'Shea, would you like to get started?
Certainly.
Presentation.
And I appreciate you recognizing Tom, and I know he would have liked to have been here with us. He has done a lot of the heavy lifting to put the budget documents together that are reflective of the work of the administrative team, reflective of the input of the school committee and the finance subcommittee. So, I'd like to thank him for his efforts. Our administrators are with us tonight, and they'll be available to answer any and all questions that might come up, and so hopefully as a team, we can fill in for Tom in his necessary absence, so.
Before you start it, I don't mean to interrupt you, I did want to acknowledge that our administrators are here tonight, and I wanted to thank you all for coming out. I know you work long days, you put in a lot of hours, and it's very meaningful and appreciated that you came out tonight for us and for the budget, so I thank you for coming tonight.
So, most of the slides that you'll see tonight will be familiar, and they reflect the budget recommendation that was made a couple of weeks ago, but certainly for viewers at home, this might be an opportunity to familiarize yourself with the recommendation for the FY '18 budget. So, we like to think that the budget that is before you tonight and before the public is tied to school and district goals, and we've made a concerted effort as an administrative team to define those goals and to line up the budget with those goals, and certainly among the goals is to ensure that we can build on the commitment to excellence that Long Meadow is long known for. We're interested in ensuring that the budget is a collaborative process and that the school committee is put in a position to discuss the proposed budget with Town Finance Committee and with Select Board and the Town Manager. And I hope you'll hear tonight that the budget is, you know, not only just, it's not about the size of the pie, but it's also about how we allocate within that pie, and so hopefully you see that those allocations are reflective of some important goals. Meeting contractual obligations is a given, and we want to make sure that we're communicating this regularly with all members of the community. So, to summarize the recommendation that was made a couple of weeks ago, you'll see that this represents a $36.5 million FY '18 budget. $33.6 million of that would be required of the general fund, and as you'll see in the notes, that's a $516,000 increase over FY '17. I think that's an increase that is probably in the range of increases that have been required of the general fund in recent years. You'll notice that one of the troublesome spots for us was the decline in special revenue from FY '17. We are looking at Tom Mazza projecting a $241,000 decrease in special revenue, and that would be grants and special education circuit breaker funds, some of the things that Mike spoke so eloquently of a moment ago. So, that increase to the general fund, combined with the decrease that we're expecting in special revenue, would result in an increase of $275,000 over FY '17. This slide says essentially the same thing as the previous slide, but maybe more succinctly. Again, general fund increase representing 1.56% increase. The total budget increase, however, would only be 0.76%, which is, given what we will be able to accomplish with this budget, I think that is, that's a positive thing, in the sense that we were able to identify some efficiencies and some cost-effective approaches that will fund some important initiatives for us in the district. So, when we look at the sources of revenue, we see that largely we are dependent on the general fund, though there are some important grants that we rely on that are listed there as well. Within that general fund is over $4 million in Chapter 70 state aid that is still in flux, and we are, though we are, you know, potentially on the verge of having the school committee vote a budget, it's important to understand that the state budget upon which we are dependent is very much unsettled. The governor just released his budget at the end of January, and the legislature is just now considering that recommendation, so there is still a lot of variables that have yet to sort of be solidified. The same slide, same information depicted graphically. You'll see again our dependence on the general fund, and so we recognize that it's important to work with the town officials, the Select Board, the Finance Committee on that allocation from the general fund. In very broad strokes, where are our expenditures? Where does the money go? You'll see that the biggest chunk of that pie relates to staff salaries. I want to make a note that online, for anybody watching at home, on our district website is the full line item budget, proposed budget, and so it will go into far greater detail than what we will present here tonight. So, I'm hoping that all the information anyone could possibly want about the proposed budget is available to the public and certainly has been made available to the school committee. So, that $516,000 increase from the Town General Fund, you'll see how that stacks up to increases that have we've experienced in recent years. You'll note that in FY '17, there was a significant increase largely linked to the introduction of full-time kindergarten, but again, that $516,000 is in the range, maybe even on the lower end of what we would normally require of the Town General Fund. The decrease in special revenue relates largely to two factors. Special education circuit breaker, which is a state fund that reimburses us for expensive special education placements, and then also a decrease in the application of school student fees, parking fees that were, that had been applied on a one-time basis in the FY '17 budget. So those are two, you know, again, in broad strokes, some of the revenue assumptions that we're working with. In terms of expenditures, we like to think of both those expenditures that are sort of contractually demanded, they're required, they're important, they relate to compliance, they relate to our ability to provide level services to kids. Those expenditures can be characterized as nondiscretionary and can be seen as kind of needed to meet collective bargaining obligations. So on one side are those required expenditures, and on the other side is those expenditures that I think are more targeted and more linked to school and district goals. Again, I hope you'll see that tonight. I hope you'll see that we're making some important allocation decisions relating to those goals. We like to find, you know, approaches that are cost-effective as a way to ensure that we can reach those goals, and the alignment is very, very important to us. So, in terms of those requirements that are required and where there really isn't a lot of room for discussion are the cost of living increases that we're contractually obligated to, the step increases, salary advancement and longevity benefits that are due to our staff, and certainly we believe it's important to, you know, remain very competitive and that we want to attract and retain the best teachers, and I think we do. And so those are expenditures that really help us maintain that level of excellence that we're accustomed to. Some other required sort of assumptions that we needed to build in, vocational tuition increase. We have a small number of students that participate in vocational programs that are outside of Long Meadow and that are even outside of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. To maintain level service, we are looking at an increase in the athletic budget. The school committee is aware, has been made aware, that we've experienced kind of a structural deficit over the years, and that $75,000 rather than being seen as a kind of an increase, and it really is to maintain existing services for our student athletes. Substitute nurse coverage, we're trying to remain competitive, ensure that we have good, highly talented nurses for our students, so that expenditure is there, and then some wiggle room for negotiable items that come up during the year. On the sort of expenditure assumptions that should be seen as more targeted and more, these are conscious decisions we're making that relate to, or they're conscious efforts to identify savings that we've made, and two items are really worthy of note. We're projecting a reduction in out-of-district tuitions for special education students and a credit to our entire administrative team, to Jean Fontaine, for leading us in this discussion and kind of ensuring that we have placements for students that are close to home, as close as possible to the schools here in Long Meadow, and if not in the schools in Long Meadow. And so when we're able to do that, it's good for kids and good for the budget, of course. And then special education transportation is an important factor for us, and we're going to realize some savings in that area. So those are two areas that will provide significant relief. Again, I think it required a lot of, you know, a lot of planning, a lot of effort by our administrative team, and I want to thank them for their efforts there. Certainly, I recognize that class size is an important kind of value for this committee and for the community, and so I'm pleased to say that we're going to be able to maintain existing class size patterns at the elementary level and the high school, and so I'm just going to jump ahead. I'm going to come back to this slide, and the committee, the last meeting, you had asked us to bring back some enrollment information, so you get a handle on what class size is going to look like both now and perhaps in the years ahead. This is a snapshot of our current enrollment as of today, and so you'll see, you know, the class sizes stretching out from pre-K level right up through 12th grade, and so I don't know if you want, this is sort of, this was not presented at your last meeting, and so I don't know if you want me to pause here and if there's any questions or thoughts that you have in relation to the overall enrollment that you're seeing.
I just want to make a comment more than anything else. So, we'd always kind of looked at that third grade class as kind of a bubble, but when we look at our numbers, really up seventh grade and beyond, the 236 number is pretty much where we used to be, but then you have fourth, fifth, and sixth down around 215, and then below that, second down, you're in the 170s. So, if that projection, although I've said in the past that we keep getting projections that show we're going to be static for the next 10 years, and we were static the last 10 years, but we look at our actual numbers as opposed to the projections, you have to wonder about the size, you know, of our middle school for one thing, but also the elementary is so much, you're talking 60 kids.
And you'd expect some sort of natural growth of those classes, of those cohorts, as they move through the grades, but probably wouldn't reach reasonably. I don't think we could say that they would reach the levels that we're seeing in ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade, or even the middle schools, so.
Yeah, I was surprised to see these numbers, I guess, is my point.
And certainly the administrators here have experience with the growth of the cohorts over time, and that's something that, you know, I'm certainly interested in learning more about, is how, you know, the current class, say, the current class of 2017, you know, how large a group was that when they were in kindergarten, you know? How much did that group grow over time? That's important to look at, so.
Yeah.
They're not static, I guess, right?
Yeah.
It is interesting.
But there is a drop-off certainly after that, behind that third grade.
Yeah.
So, when we look ahead to at the elementary level, the net effect of staffing at the elementary, it's a sort of a budget-neutral net effect on elementary staffing in terms of the number of sections at each grade level. So, I'll just give you a snapshot of each school. Blueberry Hill, obviously the K number is not filled in there. We're watching registration. There's a regular stream of parents that are making their way to Mrs. Gergent's office to register their kindergartners, a class of 2000, I don't know, 28, I don't know. And so it's fun to see the parents coming in, but, you know, we are expecting that three sections will cover us at the K level in each of our elementary schools. So that's Blueberry. Again, you see the sort of the net effect, number of sections in '16, '17 versus '17, '18. At Center School, projected class size, you know, one of the things, just draw your attention to the fact that the current K students who next year will be in first grade, you'll notice that we think it's important to add a section there, partly to deal with what we, you know, will expect to see in enrollment increase for students going into first grade. So I wouldn't expect that 14.5 to hold. And then the other factors at the K level, we do have instructional aids in the classroom, but in first grade, we don't, so it's, you know, we want to make sure we're well-positioned for first grade enrollment. And then finally, at Wolf Swamp, again.
So you're on the last page of our?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought maybe we didn't have it. So we're on the last page of the?
Yeah, this.
Package.
Right.
The class size projections.
So I just wanted to kind of, while we're talking about the class size, I want to jump ahead to the numbers. So you see, you know, Wolf Swamp, the numbers are lower in the lower grades, and, you know, it would be reasonable to expect, you know, a slight increase as you move towards fourth and fifth grade, but I think those are, those are numbers that will help us maintain our commitment. If you have any questions on any of these, happy to answer if you want me to pause there. So let me go back to where we left off in terms of the expenditure assumptions. We are looking at having a dedicated line item for community education and engagement, so this would be in relation to the Special Programs Committee. They've brought in some great speakers over the last couple of years. It's been very successful, and we want to make a commitment to that through the budget. Library staffing as enrollment falls off at the elementary level, we think it's reasonable to kind of adjust staffing in ways that reflect enrollment, so we would make minor reductions to library staffing at each of our three elementary schools. We're talking about a tenth of a reduction at Center and Blueberry, and two tenths of a position at Wolf Swamp. And this is a reduction that will still allow us to cover the library sections as a related art. And then on to perhaps the most significant portions of this budget. One relates to technology access and replacement, and the other relates to middle school staffing. And so let me jump ahead, start with technology, and then we'll come to the middle school discussion. And with us tonight is Nick George, our Technology Director, and he can speak more eloquently to some of these items, and if you need him to come up to the microphone, I'm sure he'd be more than happy and willing.
Thank you.
[laughing] Is that enough advance notice? So, Nick's team does a great job of keeping an inventory of our devices, and I've been impressed with kind of the books they keep, and they have a strong handle on the deployment of devices across the district. And you'll notice that, you know, we have, in my view, a good student-to-device ratio in the bottom right corner of the chart there. And so the issue, as this committee knows and has been relayed to the town, is that we really don't have an ongoing budgetary allocation to deal with the replacement of obsolete or unreliable student devices and even town devices. And so, this budget proposes an increase of $125,000 in the line item to address the replacement of devices across the district. And so to give you some sense of where, how this allocation might be made at the school level, Nick has identified devices that are in high need of replacement. So this is the slide that you're seeing now. The $125,000 that we are proposing in this line item frankly doesn't fully address the needs in terms of turning over the equipment that the students and teachers use on a regular basis. This is mainly student devices, strictly student devices. So, we would make some decisions about, you know, replacing the neediest devices. We've had great success with Chromebooks. They're a good solution. It's affordable, they're highly portable, they're, you know, provide the types of access that students need and that teachers are looking for in their classrooms. So, a large chunk of this would be looking at the deployment of Chromebooks. And at the lower elementary grades, we've had success with iPads, and we're, you know, probably need to make some decisions there about the ages and grade levels where we want to continue with iPads. But, so this is some of the areas that we would be looking at, addressing high-need end-of-line equipment, the iPads, and computing devices. And computing is a system that allows us to string together a number of computers running off of a single CPU, and it's, they've served us well, but it's really time to move on from that configuration. The other thing that is very important for everyone to recognize, that this allocation would allow us to expand bandwidth, and, you know, more devices, there's more software, there's more video online, there's, you know, and, you know, there's the requirements, the strain on our bandwidth is growing, and we need to increase that. So let me stop there. That's my best effort at explaining some of the technology requirements we're looking at, and again, Nick can probably give you a more detailed explanation if necessary. Any questions at all on that? All right. Anything I'm missing, Nick?
No, I think you hit it. It's just to emphasize that those devices up there, especially the iPad 2s are.
Nick, you just have to talk in the microphone.
Those devices, as Marty alluded to, are actually end-of-life, recognized by the manufacturer. So in the case of the iPad 2s, Apple isn't even releasing software updates for them anymore. So it's not just a matter of us kind of assessing that they're near the end of their life by our standards, or, you know, maybe they're too slow, or something to that effect.
Right.
They're literally going to start becoming less and less usable as applications and iOS versions come out that just don't work on them.
Thank you.
I told you you'd say it more articulately than that. Thank you, Nick. So in terms of the middle school recommendations that are before you, I've noted this in a lot of meetings, and I think it's important, though, is that when we have surveyed the community on, you know, what they are interested in in terms of our success in the years ahead, we are hearing from parents and community members and staff members that we need to make sure that we're being attentive to students' health and wellness, to their social and emotional well-being. And so, to support that, this budget is recommending an increase in school adjustment counseling at the middle school level from positions that are currently 60% to positions that would be 100%, that would be full positions. So, school adjustment counseling at each of the middle schools at full-time levels, we think that it's necessary for caseload management, and we believe that it would allow us to enhance the advisory experience, to do some programmatic things around health and wellness. It would help us expand parent and community outreach, so there's plenty of work to be done in this area. This is not a new recommendation. I think this has been on the table in recent years, and so we think this budget, though, will allow us to achieve that. So, any questions on that, or anything the team would like to add in terms of that recommendation?
Is there anyone who might be able to talk a little bit about what school adjustment counselors do, and sort of how they're distinguished from guidance counselors, so people understand the difference and the meaning of having a full-time, you know, adjustment, sort of what they do day-to-day kind of thing?
So I could either turn to one of our principals, or Jean Fontaine, or Director of People's Services, anybody who is willing and able.
I'm happy to answer, or try, anyway.
I think it's just really helpful for people to understand.
So guidance counselors are typically working with schedules and what I would say more, working with more kids less often, where an adjustment counselor is seeing kids on a regular scheduled basis. Many of them have goals that they're working on, strategies that they're trying to develop to either increase wellness and decrease something that, you know, is troubling them. They work with any student that is in crisis in the building. They connect with outside counselors, so if a student is seeking outside counseling, it's important that it connects back to the school, so it's more beneficial. So, those are things that guidance counselors don't do on a regular basis or typically. So, I think as more and more kids are being diagnosed with anxiety and, you know, lots of different issues that they're dealing with, we're seeing more kids wanting to access the adjustment counselor in school.
Right, so my understanding is that we're just, the way that we're structured now with our staffing, we're just really not able to handle the volume of cases and.
So there are days at the middle school where there is not an adjustment counselor available.
Yeah.
So you can have a crisis, and there isn't someone in the building. You know, we have other people in district, and certainly, a guidance counselor will step in and assist, but, you know, in my opinion, that's not the best supports that we should have, especially at that age level. Middle school's a difficult age level to begin with. You know, there's so much going on with students of that age and growing up, and there's a lot of pressure. So I think you do see more kids wanting to access and wanting to access, so it would be great to be able to offer that to all of our students at both schools.
Did anyone want to add anything to Jean's, or no?
I mean, I know I sent the list to you, Marty, that you sort of looked at everything that our adjustment counselors do, which.
Do you mind coming up to the.
Oh, sorry. I don't have much to say.
No, it's okay. I think it's just really helpful for people who are watching and for the community to understand.
Right, I basically echo everything that Jean just said. It truly is that piece where we have two days a week where we don't have our adjustment counselor in the building.
Yeah.
And you just sort of have to hope that neither one of those days is going to be something where we would need her for that role. You know, the guidance counselor and adjustment counselors have two different, they're two different certifications, they're specialized in two different, you know, not two different areas, but separate areas. So, like Jean said, our guidance counselor steps in, but it's not the same thing. And having somebody there when, if there's a crisis, if there's something that happens, the students that she meets with regularly are the ones that, you know, come in that day that, you know, that, also, we have kids that with, that just come in and need to see her immediately, and she's not there two days a week. So, and we find that happening more often over the past two years, where they're coming, expecting, and then it's a, it's a day-long process to get them back on track, because they didn't really get their dose of meeting with her. But again, we can call her, then we have to take her away from high school, so it's, you know, it's just having someone there daily would be very beneficial to our students.
I think there's some inherent inefficiency when you have a part-time adjustment counselor, where they're often playing catch-up. So if there's an event that happens at the school, they're, you know, they come back to school, and they're catching up with the administrators, and you're sort of rehashing a lot of what's been done. And so I think it will definitely, it would definitely allow for more continuity of services and make better use of everyone's time, I'd say.
And as you mentioned, when a child is in crisis, that child can't wait a day. They need the help and the support, and the staff needs the help and the support right then. It's critical. Thank you. Thank you, Jean.
So the other, the other middle school-related allocation decision in this budget is the reduction of three teaching positions at Williams Middle School. And so, we believe that this is a, you know, a response to enrollment patterns, and that the reduction can be made without, with maintaining very reasonable, manageable class size. And so, to kind of build us towards that, you'll remember that this is sort of the matrix that our middle school principals work on, and this sort of represents how they might schedule one grade level. And so, what you'll see is, sort of across the top, is an English-language arts teacher who might teach five sections out of a seven-period day, and where you see the UA, that's the time when they're unassigned, and their students are off at a related art, music, art, PE, you name it. So, an English-language arts teacher is responsible for five sections in the course of that seven-period day. And at the same time, if you take any one period, say, period two here, you'll see that there are five places, potentially, where students would have to be assigned. So, that typically works when you have a group of 100, 105, even 110 students, but when you are at, you'll see in the bottom row, 130 students. So each period, the challenge would be to find a place for 130 students. Well, 130 divided by five would yield class sizes that would be too large. So, that is sort of, that has been the challenge that Williams Middle School has faced over the last year or two. And it will be with us to a lesser degree next year, as this group makes its way to eighth grade. So, the question is, how can we build this matrix and still create reasonable, manageable class size? And what we're proposing is this solution, where in each of the core disciplines, there would be an extra section into which children could be scheduled. And so, and take period four, for example, rather than scheduling the 130 students into five blocks, now you have six places that the 130 students can go. So, this, take the 130 divided by six, and in broad terms, you have the results that I'll show you momentarily. So, by adding in, just having one extra section, not a full teacher, but one extra section of ELA, math, social studies, and science, we will be able to create a kind of a matrix that will reflect, you know, class sizes that are typical, and actually will be very, very similar to what we would see at Glenbrook next year. So, when Taylor and his team, and I commend him for working hard on this, and for, you know, enlisting, you know, the expertise of people in the building, and for working with the administrative team on this, if we were to add in those extra sections and put the 130 students into this schedule, this is next year's eighth grade, we would get the class sizes that you're seeing there. So the range is, you can see it for yourself, you know, a low of 17 to a high of 24. Most, the overwhelming majority of classes would be in that 20, 21, 22 range. So, this would be the class sizes that we would see next year, even if we were to reduce the three positions at Williams Middle School. So, that reduction, if, to put it in narrative terms here, the bottom line is, the class sizes don't support the retention of that full, of the four teachers that would make up that second, eighth-grade team. And I think it puts us in a position to address some other very, very important needs, technology, school adjustment counseling, et cetera, et cetera. And then again, this would yield class sizes that are very comparable to what we're seeing at Glenbrook and what we will see at Glenbrook next year. So I'll stop there for a minute. I know this has been a topic of discussion for a long time, but, you know, we think that this solution will kind of put us in the position to deliver the type of education we need to deliver to middle school students. Questions or thoughts?
Stephanie. So, my concern with this is where the teachers are coming from to cover those three sections. If we're pulling them internally, where are they coming from, and what are the implications of that?
So that's a great question, and so that, and that is, it goes to the heart of what will make this work. Stephanie's question, where would we get this, the extra ELA teacher, the extra math teacher, the extra science section, the extra social studies section? So, you recall that there were four teachers on the second sort of extra team. This proposal would have us keeping one of the four. So that's one teaching position that could be applied to this matrix to pick up a section or sections that you're seeing here. The other thing that Taylor and his team, and that we're all looking at, is, is there flexibility in other Williams, you know, existing Williams Middle School teachers' schedules that would allow us to cover these classes? And so, it's not unusual at this time of year not to be able to fully define that, but by way of example, in terms of if there are teachers that currently cover Math Lab and Lit Lab, as the numbers at Williams drop off, there might be room in there, in those teachers' schedules, to pick up one or two of these sections. At the end of the day, it will all be based on student need, and we'll put the best people that are qualified and able into the positions to match the needs of the students. It's really not, in some ways, not unlike what Tom Landers goes through on a much more magnified scale at the high school, where the sign-ups come in, Tom looks at his list of available staffing and decides, you know, who's teaching what, based on their certifications, their qualifications, their interests, their expertise, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we think that this budget will give us the flexibility and the room that we'll need to put qualified people into those positions. And a lot of it is based, again, on student need, and it's based on the staff that will be available when the schedule is getting set up. And a lot changes, as you know, from February to the time that you open the doors in September. There are people that unexpectedly move on, there are people that unexpectedly join us in the district, there are new hires, there are retirements, there are maternity leaves, there are so many variables, and it's, the puzzle is taking shape. There's a couple of pieces here that we still have to figure out, but again, that's very, very typical for this time of year. It would be unusual if we had this, you know, we'd be misrepresenting it if we said to you we had it all figured out. There are some elements of this that still have to be determined, but with the budget that we have for Williams, and the staffing levels that we have for Williams, we can cover that. Long answer to a good question.
Russ.
So, my understanding of this, in basic terms, we had about, was it 29 sections we needed to cover if we have three individuals, if we're not able to fund those three. So we have 29 sections, out of those 29 sections, if we have the same people we have now, we should have licensed people in basically all the sections, except for maybe one or two that really are the issue that we'd have to work on, and those appear to be social studies. So, you know, I think it's, I know it's in flux, but it's, if things don't change, and we have the teachers that we expect to have, then, you know, we should be in pretty good shape. If you don't, which you can never predict, then, you know, we're still going to be out hiring other licensed teachers to cover this. So, one way or the other, the expectation, from my understanding and finding a subcommittee, was we'll have licensed people in their areas for virtually all of these sections. It's what, you know, my understanding is.
Right, and that's the goal, and again, that is, it's a very, it's very typical, very common to have a couple of pieces of a very large puzzle that you still have to figure out in the springtime into the summer. And so, I think we're good. And so, I think we're good at attracting and retaining qualified people for these positions. And the principals are really good at figuring out that very complex puzzle and putting people in a position where they'll be successful. And again, you know, you take, you take what we're talking about here and you can magnify it, you know, twenty-fold at the high school where there's hundreds of sections that have to be allocated to, you know, dozens and dozens of teachers. So, this is a normal part of the scheduling process, I'd say.
I just wanted to follow up. As far as license, making sure that we have licensed teachers in there, my question is, at what cost? Because part of this plan is pulling two teachers from Math Labs and decreasing them from five to four. And so, right now, the kids that can be in Math Lab can be pretty broad, and they're regular ed, they're special ed. You decrease that to four, and what implications does that have on the learning of those students? So, this is a leap of faith and if we vote this through. This class, to me, it's almost a year too soon. Next year, the enrollment drops off and we're kind of in that in-between phase for me. If you could, if you didn't need the extra section, then I could see it, but we are in a position where we have to add that extra section and we are trying to fill those holes. And I want to make sure that we cover at what cost that is, because if we get to the end of the year and we say, oh, we really actually need those teachers, I would have rather kept the teachers and been in a position to say at the end of the year, uh, we really needed that technology. Because that's not a matter of having teachers leave and bringing them back, it's a matter of purchasing. So, I still have concerns and questions. Whenever we talk about cutting teachers, I just think we have the responsibility to look at it from all angles. And a big piece for me is what implications does this have on learning for those eighth graders? And we can maybe discuss it later, but I do continue to have concerns.
So, I, yeah, I think that's a good point. I guess, I mean, can we ask Ms. Fontaine to kind of weigh in on that a little bit as far as, because I know we talked about that in finance subcommittee, too.
Yeah, and Taylor, Taylor's here, maybe Taylor can come up as well. And, you know, when we talk about the Math Lab and Lit Lab, I think we throw that out as an example of how we might solve this puzzle. I wouldn't say, I, it would be, I think it would be, you know, misleading to say that that is the plan, because again, it depends on, number one, student needs, right? If, I'd say, come June, if Taylor discovers that there are many students, based on their performance at the end of this year, there are many students who will need Math Lab and Lit Lab services, then, then you're looking at a different plan. So, it will be driven by the needs of students. It'll be driven by available staff, it'll be driven by available certified staff, qualified staff, who are motivated, interested. You know, we have an obligation to the students, we also have an obligation to staff to make sure we're putting them in positions where they can be successful. I mean, you know, I know, you know, we would, we would hear from, frankly, the teaching staff if we were putting them in places where they, you know, where they wouldn't be successful. And anytime we stretch a teacher, you know, again, it happens so frequently at the high school where Tom Landers will say, hey, I need you to teach, you know, a world history class, I know you've been teaching US for years, but I need you to teach world. So, you put supports in place for that teacher. You hook them up with a mentor, you provide them with training, you provide them with time to kind of, you know, ride that learning curve. So, there's plenty of ways that we can position people for success in this model. So, anyways, so.
I'm happy to talk a little bit about, first of all, I think someone asked about how taking that Math Lab and Lit Lab, if that were the case, away from eighth grade. It actually wouldn't impact that because students access typically Math Lab and Lit Lab during those Unified Arts periods, so during the related art. It wouldn't be from an academic block. So, it would potentially impact maybe sixth grade and seventh grade access, and those are smaller classes. But, so if you take the Math Lab teacher for one block and have that person teach eighth grade math, it, there are still seven periods, you know, seven periods in the day where the Math Lab teacher can access kids. So, they don't see a kid every single block two in a schedule. They see maybe one, two, maybe three times in the schedule, so it may not even be the same block. So, you could have kids that access, you know, block two and block six in sixth grade, one in seven in seven. So, there's a little more flexibility with those teachers, which I think can make it a little more attractive to be able to do that.
And I do want to add that when students, and by the way, looking at the numbers, students that access Literacy Lab, we have about under 20 students that are actually per-grade level that are accessing Literacy Lab. And we have about 25 students per-grade level accessing Math Lab. In looking at my entire staff and all my teachers, teachers are licensed in multiple disciplines and multiple subjects. And so, going through and really looking at what a teacher's licensed in and really looking at the big picture of my entire staff, the Math and Lit Lab is a one of suggestion, but it's not, as Superintendent O'Shea said, we're in February, we have a long ways to go. One of the things also taking into consideration with Math and Lit Lab, sixth grade has an extension block in which it's an enrichment period. And that is another period that sixth graders can access Math or Literacy Lab. So, really, sixth grade has three times in a day that they can access Math or Lit Lab. So, we do have flexibility and we will not be causing a disservice to the students. And as Mrs. Fontaine's, Director Fontaine said, that it's not, all the classes aren't the same. It's not like it's a cohort that follows every single day. It's really individually tailored to the specific student. So, if a student needs two days, or if a student needs three days, we can tailor their schedules specifically to that. So, really, there's a lot of flexibility when it comes to this. And it would not impact our service to our students.
I can tell, you know, I think, I recognize that this was an important topic to the school committee, to the whole community last year. And before we brought this to you, we beat it up. We, you know, we looked at it as a large team and spent a considerable amount of time putting together this matrix, which is an actual matrix if you were to actually schedule 130 students. I'd also say to you that, you know, keep us on our toes, frankly. I mean, I think this is something that we will have to keep our eyes on and we would want to bring it back to you as a committee to let you know how this is shaking out. You know, what is it, what is it looking like in May? What is it looking like in June, July? And if we're not satisfied with how it looks in July, then we've got to come back to you with another arrangement. And that's, again, that's not unusual. You'll recall that we had some enrollment spikes at the elementary level at the end, going into this year, and we were able to make some adjustments to deal with that. So, we, you know, we always want to achieve what we're describing to you today. We, you know, it's, there's a lot of, frankly, there's a lot of pressure on us to make sure that we're putting kids in positions where they'll be successful in reasonably sized classes. And we want teachers to be in places where they'll be successful as well. So, say, you know, in some ways, this is, you know, something that, you know, Stephanie said, it is a, it is a leap of faith, but on the other hand, the discussion doesn't have to be over on this. I think this is, this is ongoing and we'll continue to take a look at it.
Michelle.
Just a quick question. Looking at the math algebra, if you were to, let's say, we get three new students and they happen to fit into that category, we're at our max, you know, let's say, in one of the classes, what would you do if you had three more students that landed in those areas?
If they needed the algebra? The, yeah.
The 23?
There's one that's 23 and one that's 24. So, you're really capped out there. What happens if you need three more students to go into those areas? What would you do, you know, come May or?
That, those would be the slots where they would go. They would go into one of those two, two blocks, I guess. Is that?
Yes. Yeah, that is correct. Math does drive our schedule in seventh and eighth grade because we have leveled math classes. And looking at the numbers of how many students are recommended and enrolled is definitely one of the first things we look at when we sit down for the summer to really start planning and scheduling.
When?
But that's reflected up there, all right.
When the committee was dealing with this last year, I think one of the issues that had made it more problematic last year is that we were scheduling it for seventh grade when the break between 7.1 math and 7.2 math was a little less predictable. I think it's a little more locked in. Is that maybe locked in is too strong a term?
It is. It's pretty consistent from the kids that are, whatever they're in seventh grade, we can transfer to eighth grade in the algebra and pre-algebra levels. We may have a student or two change, but it's nothing that is not manageable.
So, my question is, then, what would you do, though, if they need to go into math algebra and you have two capped-out sections there? What would we do if we get three more students to need that class?
So, I'd have to look at the number of classes that we can offer. As you can see, on this proposed schedule right here, we have six, six sections available. Do we offer three algebra, three pre-algebra? I, at this moment in time, I don't know. It will be one of those decisions that I'll have to work with my administrative team to figure out where we can best support the students.
So, if you needed to add a math-algebra section, I mean, you couldn't add, you couldn't take away from the pre-algebra in this current model because then you'd be capped in that section. So, would that mean another, you would have somebody teach a section that's already stacked, that we already have on staff? And how would that affect their schedule? Do you know what I mean? Like, if you have to add a math-algebra section up there, you can't take it from?
I think, I think it's two things that could happen. One is if the math numbers went up, maybe you'd see a drop in pre-algebra, right? But if that didn't shake out properly and if there was pressure on that section, I think that's when Taylor comes knocking on our door saying, I got a problem. Is there a way that, can we possibly add another math-algebra section to that eighth grade? And that's where we would be making some, some decisions, some allocation decisions in the spring or in the summer. Again, not, not unlike the way we added a section at the Blueberry going into this year.
Yeah.
Adding a section to this matrix, and correct me if I'm wrong, Taylor, but adding a section to this matrix wouldn't upset the whole picture, I guess, right?
No, it wouldn't upset the whole picture. But again, it would, you would have to do, we have to calculate the numbers, but we would be able to add a section. Like I said earlier, we have teachers that are dual-certified in either science, math, social studies, and we would look at that to try to tailor or add the additional section. But, I mean, obviously, if we needed to add an additional math-algebra section, we would, in working with Superintendent O'Shea, we would find the best possible solution.
And, you know, if you, I suppose the upside of that problem would be if you added a section, let's say you added it to sixth period, right? You plugged a section of math-algebra in there?
Yeah.
You'd see a corresponding drop in the other sections during sixth period, because those 130 students are now going into seven different sections instead of six.
Right.
So, if, you know, so there's.
Yeah, no, I guess my question is, how would, would you hire a teacher to teach one section, or would you be hiring a full-time staff member? You know, what would happen there?
So, again, there's so many different ways you could do that. You could perhaps hire, you know, a teacher to teach a section, you know? And again, not unheard of, right? You know, to get someone who's retired or someone from a private school or, you know, we scour the landscape to try and find people that could come in and cover that. Or again, the first place you're looking at is with existing staffing. Is there room in someone's schedule to take on that section, you know? I think the, this is the very best snapshot that we can give you right now. And I would say to you, make us come back to you with a snapshot, you know, down the road and say, all right, how is this shaking out? What is this looking like?
Do you want to go?
Either one.
I echo Michelle's concerns because when you're looking at kids who may or may not go into algebra, whether they go into pre-algebra, what are you going to do when you're just a couple? You know, are we raising the bar for the kids who go into algebra? And are we really looking at their potential and what's best for them? Or is that a staffing issue because we cut teachers too soon? And it's, in terms of coming back, the problem is, if we put this in the budget, we're going to lose the teachers. We, the budget will cut the teachers and they will be gone, and then we're going to look at hiring back. And that's a different situation than having the teachers.
Yeah, I'd say it's very possible that we could lose the teachers that we're talking about regardless, because they'll, these are talented, hard-working, good teachers, I get that, right? But they're going to look for, you know, a place where they can, where their position is stable. If they know that the position is, you know, potentially going to be reduced in FY19, they might look for a position that's more stable for them. So, that, again, staffing changes, you know, the, we're good and Long Meadow at retaining qualified teachers. This is a place where people, this is the last place they want to come as teachers, but, but things change. People, people move on, they retire, they relocate, they, there's maternity leaves, medical leaves, I mean, this.
I don't think you meant the last place people want to come. They want to land here and stay here.
It's the last, yeah, right? It's, they, not the last place, yeah. So, they want to land here and stay. Better way of saying it. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's, this is, if there were pressure on that math-algebra section, we might be coming back to you. And you should expect that we will.
Okay.
And because we, you know, I wouldn't want 27 students in there, I wouldn't want 26, 25. If there are parameters that you have for us and say, you know, we'll accept this, but we don't want to see you go over any of these numbers, or if it does, you've got to come back to us, then that's okay. I mean, I get that. I think that's, that's part of what you do as a committee is say, you know, give us, give us some parameters and we'll try to work within that.
Russ.
So, in that example, though, we'd be at 25. And I'm not sure, I don't think we've ever really talked about what our max number would be, one way or the other. So, I really don't know what the committee's position would be if it went to 25, if that's not acceptable or if it's acceptable. I don't know.
Good.
Yeah, come on up.
I just want to, I just want to look you up a little ease. So, if we, I was just looking back at numbers and even someone for our seventh-grade classes, usually, depending on where the kids land, is either two of a seventh-grade level and three of the other one. It switches depending on the needs of the kids. So, if we, just looking at history, one of Sue Newton's classes, for her 7-1 class, is she had 28 kids and 24 in another one. So, it's not, like, it's not unheard of to have higher in the two classes. And I know that you want it to be lower, but it's not, I mean, if you look through ours, it's been sometimes where she's got 25 and 25. So, it hasn't been, like, these numbers, 23, 24, you know, that would be great, that would be ideal, but if there's a, if three people moved into town and they were following in algebra, it wouldn't be unheard of to have those numbers, just so you know, just from the history of us. I mean, I know it may be not be at Williams, but just to put you at ease and, you know, those kids succeeded, they did well, so, I know, I get it.
This is still lower than what we're seeing at Glenbrook this year.
You know, like, last year, I thought the split team would work out better for your class sizes, so we didn't go with that. But that, I don't like 28, you know, like, I don't like, yeah, I think that's for that.
Yeah, 28 is definitely the highest we've had in there. But, you know, 25, it fluctuates a little bit sometimes, depending whoever, whichever one has the two classes typically ends up being a little bit, a little bit larger.
And again, so much of it is the needs of students, right? So, some way, we need to look at it at that level. Is that, that 20 in the math pre-algebra, that could very well be more challenging than the 24 that you're seeing in algebra. It comes down to what do the students need? And there might be places where we don't. down to what do the students need? And there might be places where we don't want more than seventeen or eighteen, or, you know, it, that's the way we make these decisions. And then, then sometimes you're looking at what supports are in place. Are there, are there instructional aids that are in that classroom? Is there? The, what training does the teacher have? You know, there's so many variables that we look at when we decide what's a reasonable number. Twenty-five might be reasonable, but fifteen might be really unreasonable in some settings. It, it just depends on the student needs, you know?
Stephanie?
To that point, too, and I had talked a little bit about the difference between equality and equity when we talk about numbers between the two schools. And, and there's a difference between the two. And, and one really is about what the students' needs are. So we may have different numbers because maybe Williams needs lower numbers. The thing with these class sizes is there isn't that wiggle room. So if you needed a lower class size and to move, not, not talking about math, but the other ones, if you needed to move kids, you don't have that wiggle room. And then when you look at the class sizes here versus what these kids have experienced throughout the middle school, I'm guessing, and I haven't looked at them since last year, this is a big jump. Am I right? So it's taking that into account, too, and what are the needs within this, within this school and with the programs in place? And do you have that wiggle room if you need a smaller class size and you bump them up to another section, then you really are higher?
There, there's a place or two on here where it's tighter than others, but across the whole matrix, I think there's a fair amount of wiggle room. I think, you know, if you were, it, it's, it's tight with the math-algebra. But when you look across ELA, social studies, the foreign languages, science, again, these numbers are lower than what we currently have at Glenbrook. This is better than what's currently in place.
If I could speak to this class, if this is next year's eighth grades or current, when they were in sixth grade, they were in five sections. So they were in classes of twenty-six and twenty-seven last year.
Yeah, there was a class size of twenty-seven in Marla's class, yeah.
But that's actually what I was going to say. Last year, we heard from the teachers, those sixth-grade teachers, that said it was really hard to teach those class sizes. So I don't see any teachers here speaking to it right now. I would love, you know, I, Kathy, if you want to come forward, I would be more than happy to hear your opinion on this. I know, Taylor, you said last year you were not comfortable cutting the team. So it was, or you, you, that was not your recommendation. So we heard from you and we heard from the teachers that the proposed cut would not really be beneficial for the students. So I do have in the back of my mind the sixth-grade teachers speaking about those twenty-five class sizes and how that was hard for them. So I don't know if there's anybody that can help clear this up right now in terms of how this is for teachers. Kathy, would it, you know, or Taylor, you know, have you heard from staff? Are they concerned like they were last year?
It's, we had a staff meeting yesterday. I had talked to my staff members one-on-one. We talked about student enrollment. It's a, they, our class smallest class size is one-on-one in sixth grade this year. So they, they see the trend that it is decreasing. Last year, we, we had, we had a big class. And traditionally, we've had the seven-eighteen. And Williams has experienced a smaller class sizes. And there are positive to it, and the teachers do like it. But ultimately, it comes down to Superintendent O'Shea's budget. And, and I do support Superintendent O'Shea's budget proposal. I, we love small class sizes, but at the same time, the district needs of improving technology and the social, emotional well-being of our students is very, very important.
Russ?
I guess last year, I was opposed to the change because the chart that we saw last year was like twenty-eight, and there was really no guarantee it wasn't going to go over thirty. You know, the numbers just didn't work. But when I look at this, I mean, it's hard to justify going below these numbers, or drastically below these numbers. I mean, that's my, I mean, I don't really like the idea of doing this either, but at the end of the day, we live in a town where everything is getting squeezed. And so we still need to do other things, and it's hard. I guess in my mind, I kind of lean towards, these are reasonable numbers. These are great numbers, actually, in most schools, for middle school. So, and they're the same as our other middle school. So it's hard to say, well, you know, the twenty-eight and thirties, that bothered me. I think twenty-two, nineteen, twenty-four, that's a great number. Even if it's twenty-five, it's still a pretty good number for middle school. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with this. I agree with Stephanie, though, that we need to make sure the implementation of this actually works correctly. And if it didn't, it is difficult to retract. There's no question about that. But I have a hard time just justifying financially that we should allocate resources the way we were, or would next year if we kept the whole team.
I am just wondering if we should let Dr. O'Shea finish because we have, yeah. Is everyone comfortable with that? And because we really have his presentation and the, the public, you know, the public forum and then our discussion part of the agenda. So we could continue on with this? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm nearly done. So this, this captures what we just talked about. The average class size overall at, at Williams Middle School at grade eight would be twenty-one point six. And then the other important consideration in this budget is the, would, the allocation towards elementary science to kind of keep us on track with the implementation of the FOS science series. And I'm sure Sue could speak to this if you have any detailed questions. But we'd like to make sure that our third and fourth grade teachers have the materials they need to, to implement the series. And this would ensure that we had adequate resource books and online materials for the students. And the teachers did a wonderful job of sharing and moving materials across schools, and it was, it was well-coordinated. DPW, thank you for your help with that this year. But this would reduce our, the reliance on the sharing and moving of materials. And of course, certainly, teachers appreciate, you know, when they have materials in front of them, and so they can teach in the moment. They're able to, you know, if, if there's a particular teaching moment that requires them to grab some materials, it's nice to have them on hand. And so I think this increases the flexibility that they need to properly teach elementary science. And more materials means we have more opportunities for enrichment. That's something that I've heard frequently in my time here. And I'm, I'm pleased to think about the opportunities there. And also the professional development that would come with the purchase of the materials. We got a date coming up in March shortly where FOS representatives will work with our elementary teachers on that FOS science series. And this would allow us to continue that training next year. So the net increase, again, is point seven-six percent. It's a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar increase on the bottom line.
Just for clarification, I, I mean, to interrupt you, but that line I, I mean, you were talking about for the curriculum, forty-four thousand is correct?
It is forty-four thousand.
Yes.
Forty-four thousand, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. So this is, the, the, really reflects almost all of what we have just addressed. The reductions and the additions to the budget resulting in an overall increase of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. So I think what I've heard from this committee is that they want to know sort of what we're, what we're talking about as an administrative team. And so in an effort to kind of represent some of the, the conversations that we have when we sit around the table and say, you know, what, what do, what is important to us? Where should we allocate? There are some things that, you know, should be put out there as potential future considerations. We've had great success with the coaching model in literacy and math, and that's something that we think we should expand. We want to make sure that their science gets available for our K through two teachers. Elementary health is something that has been a topic of discussion across the district. Mr. Landers would tell us that he's, he's going to be watching his social studies numbers. Technology replacement cycle, this budget addresses important parts of that cycle, but there is a lot of work to be done. And then making sure we have a reliable allocation for turning over curriculum materials, textbooks, and consumables. So there are plenty of things that we should continue to plan for and think about in, in the years ahead. And if there are opportunities in the FY eighteen budget, these are some of the things that we would, we would want to talk to the committee about. So that is all I have. If you have any questions, we're ready, willing, and able.
John?
Yes, well, first of all, I want to thank you for your report. A couple of weeks ago, we heard some testimony on air quality at Williams Middle School. And it was rather disconcerting to read, but not to pick on Williams, not blaming you.
I think it was both, both schools.
Quality of the year in that building.
It was both schools.
It's both. But I thought it was mainly at Williams. Well, whatever. My point is, I believe you were going to talk with some of the, the folks and other staff
Yeah.
to see what we can do. Are we going to put some money into this budget to handle air quality issues? I know we got an SOI approval
Right.
hanging out there with the select board.
Yeah.
But, and some say it's going to pass, and I don't know. But if it doesn't pass, and even if it does pass, you're going to have to have an interim adjustment of the air quality there if we're going to be diligent. So what are your thoughts on that?
So there, there's plenty that we can and should do with existing resources. And so we, we got together recently with the principals and facilities director, Tom Mazza, to sit down and kind of put together an action plan for the things that need to be done immediately. Again, within existing resources, existing budgets, existing staff. And so we want to be very purposeful in kind of addressing what we can immediately. And then there are, as, as the report pointed out, there are sort of systemic things that perhaps go beyond what we can manage with the existing budget. And I think that's really where, you know, the school committee and the select board have to, have to talk, to figure out, you know, how we're going to address the air quality issues that, that have been identified. You know, what, what aspects of that can we reasonably be expected to address? And are there aspects of it that we should begin to talk to the town about? Because some of the, some of what has been pointed out in this study, and, and really frankly, some other studies that have been done, is we're talking about capital issues that, you know, relate to building systems. So I think there is the immediate discussion around what can we do immediately? And then there's the larger discussion about, you know, that, that probably would involve town officials and school committee. And, you know, in terms of making an allocation in FY eighteen, again, you know, I think you have to think about as a committee, you know, what, what do you believe you have responsibility for, and what do you believe the town has responsibility for? And so that's, that's kind of a discussion that I think that, that has to be had at this level.
Russ?
I mean, the issue is we don't have, the capital budget's on the town side. So I think we need to figure out exactly what we need to do. And then if it is a town cost, we need to go to the town and tell them this is what we think needs to happen based on the report. I, I think, I mean, this is probably outside of tonight's discussion, but I think we need to have more information about, you know, there was only a couple tests on each building. It wasn't, you know, there's, I think we have a lot more discussion as a committee about what we do about this. And, you know, do we do more testing? Do we talk to the town officials about how we rank, you know, prioritize everything? But for this budget, you know, we don't have any money in the budget to do major things. Maybe end-of-year funds we might, but.
I don't even know if it's our, if it's our job. It's not our budget. It's the, the town owns our building, so they're, they should be the ones doing all this work. And Marty, could you touch upon maybe some of the things that you discussed at that meeting that you can do, that you're doing?
Yeah.
In the future?
So we've talked, we've talked about, we've got a couple of windows that open up with February vacation and then April vacation. And so kind of getting into the buildings and doing kind of a, for lack of a better phrase, a deep cleaning and perhaps a decluttering, you know, which, because I think what we, what we heard was that there is, you know, particulates that, that dust is an issue, frankly. And so to get in there and do that type of cleaning, I think is something that we can do in, in February and April. I don't have my notes with me, but we also talked about some additional testing, perhaps recommending additional testing to the school committee. Help me out here. We talked about
What about cleaning the ductwork? Is that, including that with the?
Yeah, some ductwork cleaning, some, some painting.
Were you able to recover your notes?
I have not, but I will, yeah. Painting, cleaning, decluttering, you know, making sure that kind of even our evening custodians have a clear idea of what their responsibility is in terms of making sure we've got good climate and air quality. So I thought was to report out to the school committee at your next meeting on sort of that action plan.
Okay.
So I don't have my notes with me on that.
Sure, no problem.
That's where I'm juggling in my head right now, what to do, because it's, that was sort of something that I was, Marty and I have been talking a lot about, obviously, ever since we got the report. And what do we do? Where do we go from here? And we had scheduled to, to discuss it at next week's meeting in depth. So I had anticipated we would have this discussion next week. But we have the budget discussion, and really there are potentially some implications for the budget. If we do want to say that the schools want to pay for a little bit more testing, at least to have some more data to move forward with. So it's a little bit more complicated than which meeting we're going to put it on. I, I mean, we certainly could hold off on discussing the budget, the, excuse me, voting on the budget until next meeting. And Marty could come with his notes from the meeting and come prepared. And we could do it that way. But, you know, I think we have to decide as a committee how much we want to get into depth about that tonight versus next week. Russ?
Yeah, I agree with what Liz just said, though, which is if there's something major, then the town budget and the school budget is not set up where we deal with the major issues. So testing, if there's a few thousand dollars, you know, we have, you know, whatever the total dollar amount of our budget is, we're going to be able to find a few thousand dollars for testing. The problem, you know, if it's something major, like all the AC units should really go, let's say, if that was the outcome of that report, you've got to talk to the town about it. Because the budget isn't set up, if, if we had a budget where it's fifty thousand or a hundred thousand on our side for capital projects, that'd be one thing, but it's not. So I think we'd be going back to the town for something major as far as this budget goes. I mean, a few thousand dollars for testing, you know, we could probably do something like that. But anything beyond that, I would say we should be going to the town. Because if we don't, we're affecting all these other priorities that you're trying to allocate for kids. Now, this is a kid issue, too. The issue is it's a capital project, really. Most of the things that he's talking about are capital projects in that report. You know, it's like the ventilation, the ductwork, the AC units, you know, those are major costs. And really, that's typically done by the town. Now, we
I just want to piggyback on what Russ is saying, because we've been down this road before, not, I mean, obviously with air quality testing, but also with replacement of carpeting at Center School in Glenbrook, with replacement of wallpaper. We've done our part in maintaining our buildings. The select board likes to remind us frequently that we're the tenants, they're the landlords. So if there's a problem, it's their responsibility to fix it. And it sets a very, very, very dangerous and bad precedent for us to use the money that we're supposed to be putting towards educating children on maintaining buildings when frequently we're reminded that we don't have a say. So when the select board several years ago tried to consolidate our utilities, the argument they used was that we pay, you know, that we're your landlord. You're our tenant. We'll take care of it. I, you know, obviously think that we have a good ally in the DPW, and it seems like Dan McCarthy really does want to do what's right. And I think that we need And I think that we need to work the channels. I agree with Russ. If we need to come up with a couple thousand dollars to do our own testing, it's fine. But you have a director of a board of health that is responsible for doing that. You have a DPW that is responsible for conducting those tests. There are mechanisms in place, and the school committee should not be using its funds to do anything other than educate kids and pay staff by materials.
And for what it's worth, and I would want to echo what Michael said regarding the support that we've got from Dan McCarthy and from Beverly Hershorn as the board of health director, sort of, they've been with us, and they're kind of advising us on some of the things that we can do immediately to address some of the immediate concerns. The other thing I would want anybody watching at home to know, if there are any student-specific issues, we'll address those and, you know, take the steps that we need to if there is, you know, a particular child that is, you know, is dealing with an air climate concern.
Before we continue, I just want to say thank you again to the administrative team for being here and let you know that you don't need to stay for the remainder of this meeting unless you want to. But I wanted, Marty and I wanted to let you know that you can feel free to go home at your leisure. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
John, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to Russ's comment that we can find some money in the budget. Yeah, I guess maybe we could, but that's not what I'm thinking we ought to do. I think we ought to say, look, we want to test these buildings so we can make some empirically-driven arguments to the Select Board that there's a problem. And if we're the tenant, they're the landlord, we want to present them with evidence that... Really, I don't know how much money that's going to require. I'm glad to hear we had a health person involved in this. But, you know, the Select Board's idea of a building committee, they announced they're going to have an architect, someone who's an engineer, all kind of physical science-related. But there wasn't one health person on their building committee. There wasn't much of a human input to it. And the same with Michael, yeah, we're here in the business of educating, but existence precedes essence, as someone once said. You know, we want to not poison these kids with bad air and cause respiratory problems. So if we need to, you know, the budget's off by, what, points, well, we're going up 0.72 percent. We're presenting a very frugal budget. This is not lavish spending by any measure. And so if we need to, maybe we should put some more money into it. And that's sort of where I'm going right now. I don't want to degrade in any way the work you guys, you have put into it, Marty, and the committee, finance subcommittee, which I'm on, but you do some of the heavy lifting around here. So if we need to add more, I think we should.
I'm going to hold this conversation the same way that I held the other conversation, because we are supposed to move into the public hearing discussion, and then we need to come back as a committee and revisit these very important issues. So at this time, I will open up the floor to anybody in the public who would like to come forward and ask any questions. Sorry for the wait, Ken.
Oh, okay. It's all fun to watch.
It's better to watch.
From the side.
It's always fun to be from the sideline. It's still your fault, sorry. No, well, so John, you took my, one of my questions was, I had seen a maintenance line increase of about $7,000, and I was wondering if that had included any sort of plan to address the health concerns of the middle schools with the mold that was visible during one of those inspections and the high CO2 levels. And I'm wondering, listening to Michael, if that's a question I should go in front of the Select Board at this point and say, look, there's a clear issue at the middle schools for some cleaning, and at the end of that guy's, that gentleman, he suggested a plan for an overall clean air plan. Should I be going to them and saying, instead of you guys? I guess that's one of my questions. And then my second question is just about the elementary science amount. And I was wondering, does that give every grade level at this point all the materials they need at each of the schools, or is that just third and fourth grade?
I might ask Suda Chip in here, third, fourth?
Third, fourth. So third, fourth, fifth, sixth. I mean, third, fourth, fifth will have it.
Third, fourth, fifth, so still kindergarten, first and second grade will be sharing.
Yeah.
So is there a plan for the next year's budget to give it to the rest of, like, is this like a third, a third, a third rollout type of thing?
If we're not able to achieve it with end-of-year funds the way it's been done in the past, then that would definitely be the recommendation, that we fully outfit all teachers with the materials that they need. The rollout, you know, has been sort of slow and incremental, and this year, you know, we didn't expect that the teachers teach every unit in the kit. It was more, you know, let's learn, take it slowly. And so that will be part of the rollout next year. But we would want to make sure if there are end-of-year funds available, I think that would be a recommendation we might come back to the committee with to address the K12 needs.
I should stick with things.
So I'd like to address the question about the town. For one thing, I don't want to, I don't want this to sound like it's, you know, the town is saying they're not going to do anything. We haven't even talked to the town yet. So it's more of a, we did a very, you know, preliminary type of review. We really didn't even test, I mean, he tested for mold in one or two locations of both buildings.
Visible, and that's what the health department is concerned. Visible mold that's in the air conditioning units and those duct units.
So I think the first step would be, yeah, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, it does exist. I think the first step is, so far, the committee, like, I haven't heard from the public health department yet, so I think we need to get more information about what the issues are, what type of testing everybody recommends. Talk to Dan McCarthy and the board of selectmen. Try to get a plan together that we all agree on, because it's much more likely that they'll help us fund something if they agree on how we got to the results. So I think we really have to think about that as a committee, is, you know, I think the next meeting when we talk again, hopefully, we can figure that out. But I think right now, where we're at, if we went to the town immediately and said, well, let's spend a large amount of money fixing the problem, they're going to say, you know, we need more information, probably. You know, but I don't know. But right now, there's been no discussion with the town yet, so we don't know what they're going to tell us. And I don't, I think it's premature to think they're not going to give us money, or, you know, I don't even know how much money we need. But I think it's a valid point, and we just have to look at it more, is really the way I look at it.
Yeah, I just don't want that issue to go away. And it's during budget season right now, between the schools and the towns. I feel like this is like the moment that this subject needs to get talked about between the schools and the town.
Yeah, I think next meeting, we definitely need to.
Because we're not going to have a new school, even if we do this SOI this year, we're not going to have a new school for seven years. So, I mean, I was at a Blueberry PTO meeting in December, I think you might have been there as well, when one of the parents mentioned, what are you doing for the kids that are there for the next seven years until the new school gets built to keep it healthy?
Yeah.
And so if it's a school thing or it's a town thing, you know I'm willing to go in front of anyone and beg for money, so let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Andy, to give a better answer to Liz's question with regard to some of the immediate things, I'm just kind of taking some notes here. We talked about visible mold, we talked about dirt and debris, we talked about, you know, doing what we can to promote better air exchange. We're doing a lot of CO2 monitoring right now. Pre-filter cleaning, that was one of the suggestions, kind of making sure that we're cleaning in those cavities that might exist before the air is filtered. Cleaning of ductwork, as Russ reminded me. Porous surfaces, rugs, upholstery, kind of getting in, cleaning those surfaces. So there's a lot of, we'll package it up and go into the committee as kind of an action plan. But I think if we put our minds to it, there is a lot that we can do with existing resources. And then I think, again, as Russ said, end-of-year funds might be an opportunity as well. We could take a look at that, you know. So I think there's a lot of good people putting their minds to it right now, and appreciate what Dan McCarthy's doing, Beverly Hershorn's doing for us, and we'll package it up for you for next week. If you have any immediate suggestions, we're putting that together, you know, in the days ahead. So if you have some suggestions now with regard to that immediate stuff, then I'm all ears.
Stephanie? I'm glad to hear that Beverly Hershorn is involved in it, too. And I don't know how much knowledge the DPW has in terms of cleaning and making sure it's done in a way that's not actually going to make everything airborne, so there is...
That was exactly my question.
Yeah, there are specific steps that they need to take to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Right.
I also just wanted to mention that, and Beverly may know this as well, that if there are visible sites of mold that people have questions about, and whether it's active or what it is, it is very easy to take that sample, package it up, and send it to a lab. And I think that she would probably know how to do that. I've done it myself. So that is something that's very cost-effective, and it will give you great information.
I would also say, if parents have concerns, then in addition to contacting the building principal, they should call the director of the board of health. And they should ask her to go in and take a look. She does the testing.
Yeah.
You know, she's responsible for that.
And she'll collect the numbers, because I'm hearing from people, oh, so-and-so switched schools because of the air. Do we, as a committee, have, we don't need the identifiable information, but do we have the number of kids who have been affected by this and switched, or our parents are complaining that they're sick now? That's information that I think is worth us having. And we've discussed how some kids are more sensitive than other kids, and granted, that's with everything from outside allergies or not. But we have an identifiable issue, we do have an action plan. But I would like numbers if we do in fact have, you know, I mean, this is all hearsay. I have no idea as to its accuracy, but when I hear that swirling around and we're talking about it, I think it's information that the committee should have.
Agreed.
And if there's just complaints or they haven't switched, but how many kids are actually, do parents believe are affected? I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I like Michael's suggestion to the Department of Public Health.
I think, yeah, that's probably the better.
The CO2 levels being that high, that's a problem, too. So, I mean, there's definitely a problem, it's just a question of...
That's why we're replacing exhaust fans.
You know, how big is the problem, and what do we do immediately to solve it?
Yeah. I mean, do we have the option of opening windows? I mean, that's an easy fresh air exchange.
Glenbrook has got a problem, that's why you don't have ACs over there.
They're windows.
Yeah. And, you know...
Williams is somewhere like that, too.
Everything's so systemic, and, you know, you open windows, does that create other issues? And so, I mean, we ought to be really, really thoughtful about any steps that we take. And I think what we've heard is, you got to think about this holistically, you got to think about it, you know, the whole building as a system, and so...
I think that's why Beverly's probably a good...
Yeah, she's been a great resource.
And she'll put the pressure on the board of selectmen and on the DPW and on the school department to take corrective action if it's warranted. So I think, I mean, you know, when she comes in, you kind of have to do what she says. So I think that she's the best person equipped to direct this type of conversation in terms of, or the person in that position is the best type of person to direct the DPW on this and direct the Select Board.
But I think the crossroads that we're at tonight is, do we need to think about whether or not we have to earmark some money? Because even though philosophically it's true that who should, you know, that the town should pay, the town owns the buildings, I think the reality is that we do have these issues, they're real, kids are impacted, you know, now by these issues. And, you know, what can we do? And we don't have a plan yet, because this information is still pretty new to us and to our administration. So we have to have a plan. But my concern is, do we pass a budget, and then we have a plan, and then we realize that we really needed money from the budget to do certain things? John?
Well, as a suggestion for a plan, let's add $50,000 as a token amount of money to our budget on top of what we have. And when the Select Board asks us, what do you need $50,000 for, then we tell them. It's because we have serious concerns about the environment of two of the middle schools. And the $50,000 is our estimate, but we would like to have some people who are proficient in this field come in and actually measure the full dimension.
Yeah, we would need, we would need someone to give us an estimate to justify that, right?
Well, the whole idea would be, use our budget...
I understand exactly what you're saying, yeah.
...as a tool to say to the Select Board, before you go through the roof talking about how we're throwing away money, you tell us why this is a bad idea.
Well, I like John's suggestion in terms of trying to get them to kind of come around from a cognitive perspective in terms of how to address the air quality issue. But I would also say, you know, from a financial planning perspective and from a budgetary perspective, the budget is not the right mechanism for funding a one-time expenditure. It's a mechanism for funding continual expenditures. I mean, this is an expense that should be coming out of school choice, it should be coming out of reserve, you know, it should be coming out of one of our revolving accounts. I don't know if putting an earmark in our budget for a one-time expenditure is going to do anything more than just raise our floor and, you know, really kind of give us an issue in terms of our negotiation. I think if you want to have a conversation about air quality, I think that you can have a conversation about air quality without making it a budgetary item. I think that you can basically say that we've got kids that are in schools that are unhealthy, if that's the case, and the Select Board is, they have to act on that. There's no way around it. I mean, you're going to put children's, you know, health and safety at risk? I mean, of course, they have to act on that.
I think what John's saying, though, is a really excellent proposal, because it really does say, you know, this is something that we have to, we need to act on immediately. And I think putting it in the budget makes a strong statement. Does anyone else want to weigh in on John's proposal, Stephanie?
I wouldn't feel comfortable, I get where you're coming from, but I wouldn't feel comfortable putting an amount in when I feel like we don't have anything to back up that amount.
We need an estimate.
And we need, and what would that amount be? If we're looking for building, something with the building, Michael's right, we need to go to the Select Board. And if we're looking for anything else, $50,000 would be a lot of money. I don't think, I think we need more information. I think we need to go, I think it makes sense, the route we're going and involving Beverly, and I like routing some of it to her, because this is, she is the director of public health here. I think that's her title, is that right?
Yeah.
And I think that's the correct route, and I think that she has knowledge in this area and knows who to bring in, too. And I think that we need to utilize her.
Not to mention this, we, I mean, has anybody actually asked the Select Board whether they're willing to, you know, front the money to correct this action in the buildings? I mean, are we kind of talking ourselves into a problem that doesn't, are we like looking for a solution in search of a problem? I just, you know, I think we all understand that this is an issue, and I think we've obviously voted in support of, you know, kind of trying to get a handle on it. But, I mean, wouldn't it be beneficial to ask Mario Mazza or ask Stephen Crane, you know, if this, you know, will you do this comprehensive testing? We think it needs to be done. And then, once we get the results back, you know, can we use free cash? Can we use, you know, stabilization? Can we use school choice? Like, what are the options in terms of funding this? I don't know if we need to make this a political argument. I think that it kind of already is a political hot potato to avoid to begin with. And I certainly, if I was on the Select Board, wouldn't want to be on the wrong side of, you know, allocating money to fix a mold issue in schools.
Russ?
So I'm going to spend the night agreeing with Michael, but I agree with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I just think it's premature to, we don't know the board's going to say no, we don't even know what we're asking for. So I think it's too early to be going down this road right now.
By the way, I want to just clarify, that's not saying we don't do something. I think that's just saying we need to get, figure out what we're going to do.
John?
Well, $50,000 will certainly get their attention. And it's something we could let them know is coming down the road. There's nothing wrong with asking Marty to speak to Stephen Crane, the town manager, and let them know about our concern and what we're thinking of doing here. And if it takes some embarrassment of them to get their attention, fine. You know, I'm thinking of an analogy here. You said it was a one-time expenditure. Suppose we found out that all the thermostats in the high school were not working properly? We would have to do a test, right? Instead of just anecdotal information, I don't think it's cold, as cold in here as it says, or whatever. We would ask for some, an assessment of the instruments that are measuring temperature. So we're talking about an assessment for instruments that'll measure air quality. I think that's an analogy. Okay? So, so that's what I'm proposing. You like that idea, Michael? You can agree on it.
I don't, no, I don't disagree with, you know, the way you put it. I just, I just think that, you know, the budget is not the right... I just, I just think that, you know, the budget is not the right vehicle for accomplishing this. And quite honestly, I cannot think about a reason why members of the general government would.
What's another vehicle? An add in the reminder?
No, I mean, I think that, to actually get it funded, I think that there's plenty of mechanisms on the town side to fund, you know, an air quality test and the response to that test without having to put it into the school budget.
Look, let them say no to our $50,000.
Right.
We'll take it, and let them say, we'll take care of it, if they will.
Why can't we just ask them to take care of it?
Well, do both, you know? I mean.
Because I think what John is saying is, it's, you have more leverage when you have it as part of the budget. You have, you have, you know, a place to, a stronger place to negotiate from. And I think it's a legitimate proposal from that point of view, not from the point of view of trying to corner anybody, or manipulate a situation, or skip the part about communication. Certainly, if this is something that we were going to consider, we would have to bump it to next week, because we would have to have a lot of conversations with a lot of people. But I think that the leverage part of it, and showing that it's something that needs to be part of somebody's budget, because right now, it's not part of anyone's budget, and it needs to show up somewhere. Because from the tests that we saw, and the things that we saw, you know, we saw in that report, something needs to be done, and it needs to be done sooner rather than later. You know, and as Stephanie pointed out, we're still in the process of trying to figure out, like, even if we're going to spend a vacation or spend a summer cleaning out those univans at Williams, are we going to be doing more harm than good by distributing particulate matter that, you know, isn't being properly contained? Does our staff have the training for that containment? Those are questions that I don't have the answers to yet, and I would like to get those answers as well. So we need to have a plan. What can we do now with the staffing that we have? With Dan McCarthy, who's on board and helping and supporting? And what do we need to fund? And there clearly are big issues that we are going to need to fund between now and the time that we have new schools, because we certainly can't leave the kids in the schools and the teachers and the staff in the schools the way that they are now for the next seven, eight, nine, 10 years.
I'd say, you know, for me, step one would be additional testing. I mean, if we're going to do anything systemic.
Absolutely.
I mean, I wouldn't even be reluctant to, you know, make some pronouncement about opening all the windows unless we know that that's going to, you know, provide the type of climate that we're looking for. So we would be, we would be shooting in the dark if we tried to proceed without additional testing. If that's, you know, if this is an issue that the committee wants to tackle, to me, that's step one.
I agree. Opening windows is a good example, though, of something that we can do tomorrow that does provide dilution of CO2 levels. That you're risking bringing in, you know, any sort of outside environmental pollution, but in terms of diluting the CO2 levels, I think that, from my experience, the benefit certainly outweighs the risk. I mean, you just take the Glenbrook gymnasium, for example. I mean, it's, there's absolutely, you can barely breathe in that room. It's so shut off. And on Saturdays, when they open the doors for the kids' basketball, it makes a really big difference, and you can feel the difference physically and mentally. And so I think that window opening has to certainly happen. I didn't mean to go off about the dilution, but it's a free way that we can improve the CO2 levels. Russ, you wanted to talk. Sorry for going on for so long.
I think we should, I agree with Marty. I think we need to do more testing.
Yeah.
Because what we have right now, obviously, there's been more conversation. I'm not privy to yet, but the report itself doesn't say, go out and do a bunch of things. I mean, it doesn't even say anything about the windows, or it didn't really give us much about.
Yeah.
What do we do to fix the problem necessarily, other than the major things we could do?
Right.
So I think if we're going to do more testing.
Make some recommendations.
Yeah.
Make a bunch of.
But not like the whole window opening thing. That might be his recommendation, but he didn't actually put it in. But I think we could, I think if we're going to do more testing, to go back to what Michael was saying, I think we need to do that in coordination with the town, because us continuing to do our own testing, they may or may not find that to be a valid test. I mean, we need to make sure we're on the same page. And I'm expecting that, I think, based on how this has gone so far, that the town will probably work with us to figure out how to do that in a reasonable way. I could be wrong, and if I'm wrong, then I guess we'll argue about it. But at this point, I just think it's premature to do that, because I think they may agree. And then we don't have anything to argue about, hopefully.
I mean, I agree with Russ, and I feel as though there's probably not one reason why the DPW would not go along with this, especially if the Board of Health believes that this is an issue. And, you know, I mean, if we're talking about $50,000, then that's something that requires an RFP, something that requires a public bidding process. And I think that, you know, if that's going to be the case, then we need to put it on the Select Board and on the DPW to find, you know, $50,000 within their existing budget, or cover a deficit at fall town meeting to fund this. I mean, I don't, I don't.
I think that's what John's proposal is trying to do, though.
Right, but I don't, I just don't know if putting it in our budget is, you know, providing any more leverage than having the, you know, the Director of the Board of Health and parents saying that their kids are getting sick from mold. You know, I don't know what additional leverage it provides us, you know, more than just saying directly to them, we want you to test the mold in our schools. And my guess is that no one's going to blink an eye, because, or bat an eye, because who wants to be the person to say no to that? Who wants to be the person to say, no, I think that our middle schools should continue to remain unhealthy? I just, I think, I just don't see a scenario in which we are not, you know, all going to be on the same page in terms of trying to do what's right in these buildings. And then if we do have to replace air conditioners, if we do have to clean carpets, if we do have to replace ceiling tiles and exhaust fans, we're not paying for that. The town's going to pay for that. You know, I don't want to get into the habit of putting things in our budget just to make a point. I think that, you know, we have the ability to have an actual conversation with them, to have our parents and our constituents have an actual conversation and petition them to do this. But I just think that we're putting sort of the cart before the horse, because nobody's actually asked them what they're willing to do. And, you know, I don't want to put $50,000 into our budget, you know, without doing the research, and without actually, you know, deciding that, you know, I mean, because it's just going to come down to a, to another sort of little fight over, you know, a nothing amount of money that already probably exists in some line item on the town side.
And I just, I would really like to hear from Beverly Herschorn in this meeting. I mean, this is her, this is her area, which she does.
Right.
And I think that involving her is a great step, in that we just need to hear and then involve the town.
It is what she does, but she also doesn't have a whole lot of knowledge about the schools. I mean, really, the first time she heard about this was when I contacted her about a year ago, and I think that was the first tour that she did with the schools and with Marie Doyle in the middle schools, both of them.
And I think that's true, but her area is, she'll know how to get it tested. She'll know the assessments. I mean, her, this is, she's the Director of Public Health.
I mean, this is a public health issue. It belongs in her court, you know? And we can be the people kind of throwing the ball to her all day long, and we should be, and we should put the pressure on her and the Board, you know, in our capacity as political leaders, but this is, you know, her ball to run with.
Yeah, I also think, you know, I think we have to, I think we have to really make a decision right now about whether we want to hold off on our budget until next week, when we can have a more in-depth conversation about this particular issue, or if we want to vote tonight. That's really what we need to decide.
Well, I don't.
My concern is not, you know, I understand whose job is it, but what I'm most concerned with is the kids who are in those schools tomorrow, not so much whose job is it. So I want to know what's going to be, what's going to be done, what we can do tomorrow, you know, during February vacation, over the summer, that's reasonable. What we can, you know, what we can take out of our budget, whatever sort of menial testing that needs to be done. But I don't want this to be a big fiery political issue. I want it to be focused on the people who are in those buildings. And so figuring out, the best way to get that done is, you know, it's not simple. There are no instruction manuals for it. Stephanie?
With regard to waiting on the budget, though, I think we need to wait for that conversation, voting on the budget, because I have concerns about voting on it tonight, but it's not related to this discussion. So I don't know if we want to wait for that, talk about whether.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Do you, which, I'm sorry, which part did you want to wait on?
In terms of asking if we want to wait on the budget, because there's all different reasons on waiting to vote on the budget tonight, not necessarily specific to.
Michelle?
Yeah, or Kathy, because I was wondering, is there something that you could talk to us about in relation to the middle schools? Like, do you have any input to give us for staffing or air quality?
Staffing, sorry.
I just, I have questions for the people at home. Thanks, Kathy.
Yep. I think the concern for staff is, and this goes back to last year a little bit, is we thought we had that team for two years. They see the numbers. They understand, and we understand reality. The big thing that I would ask of the committee is to not flip-flop that, like last year, because we do have people's lives.
Right.
And, you know, they've been told right now that they're possibly cut. And I think that is the most important, make the decision, and let them, the people who would be cut, deal with that.
Yeah.
Vassalating back and forth with how it all happened last year, just as brutal.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think, you know, obviously, smaller class sizes, you ask any teacher.
Right.
You know, teaching 20 versus 25, they're going to want 20. But we also know reality, and we understand budget.
Reality meaning that those class sizes, we're looking at a reasonable class sizes.
Well, if you're going to ask any teacher, I'll tell you, they'll want 20 instead of 25.
Right.
But, you know, we understand the blip of a year.
Yeah. What do you specifically mean about the flip-flopping? Are you talking about, so, because obviously, I wasn't on the committee last year.
Last year, it was, we're keeping the team, we're not keeping the team. Is it going to be a travel team? Is it going to be just at Williams? Is it going to be cut? That, I think the, the decision went in so many avenues, it was never a direct decision. And I think that's why even, that's why I brought my staff here. I'll be honest with you, the staff from Williams, because, I mean, people were being told, oh, this time you're going to travel, you're going to travel to Glenbrook. Then, oh, yes, we're going to have the team. Oh, no, then next week, we weren't having the team. So it wasn't just a clear decision. So these people didn't know where their lives were going to be.
So when you're talking about that.
Mm-hmm.
Are you also saying that the staff want to know, you know, as soon as possible, exactly who we're talking about in terms of.
They probably know already.
Reduction, or is that something that?
Well, the staff who's affected have been spoken to.
Sorry?
The staff that is going to be affected, they've already been given the heads up.
So we don't have an issue there with?
No, but that even happened last year.
What happened last year was bad. That was.
You see, I don't know the details of that.
Well, there was disagreement, I think.
We flipped flopped.
Amongst the committee, and also administration, and then the town, and we went back and forth many times. It was very confusing to all of us, I think.
Okay.
And obviously, for the teachers involved, whose, you know, livelihood was at stake, that was not fair, the way that happened.
Okay. It wasn't resolved till very late, too, I think.
It was pretty much town meeting.
Right. So, and I think for them, that.
That was very difficult.
That wasn't good.
Do you have any thoughts on air quality issues? Have you heard from any of your members concerned? I should be, if I could, let me preface that. I taught at the high school, and we talked about open windows. The old high school was so bad that each teacher was controlling the temperature in their room by opening windows.
Right, right.
Or closing them as appropriate, you might remember that. Which was causing the heating bill to go higher and higher, okay? And the price of oil was going up. That's the sort of thing that starts taking place when you don't have.
Right.
A completely holistic system that's functioning. And I think you're correct in pointing that out. It should be holistic. I agree with you. But do we have people doing things like that now, opening windows in January and February, because they're concerned about the quality here, it feels, quote, "stuffy" in here?
Or is there a general discussion among the staff about their quality concerns? Because.
I don't often anecdotally hear those conversations, to be honest with you. They're targeted in certain areas for different rooms. We know that certain rooms get targeted every time a test comes, or tester comes to our building. I think some of the steps have been rectified to take care of some of those rooms, where some sinks have been removed, or rugs have been removed, and tile have been put in. I think any little thing like that helps everyone, and a good cause of just trying to have some good air quality. But I don't really think teachers have really that discussion a lot, to be honest with you. They know testers have come through. I don't know if they know the depths of the results that you've discussed this evening. And unfortunately, I couldn't be here when that report was given, but anecdotally, I don't hear a lot.
Yeah, and I'll say, maybe I'll even go a little bit further than Kathy, in the sense, when I sat down with some teachers to talk about the, to gather some information for the SOIs, there was a lot of concern about the unevenness of the heat and ventilation and the air conditioning, and they felt like they needed some consistency, and that overall, the climate wasn't conducive to learning. Now, but I would agree with Kathy's assessment, like, you know, we hear that there are specific concerns about specific areas, and we try to address those. And I think this is an issue that will require constant attention and constant management, right? And I think we all, everybody should be tugging on this rope, right? Administration, the town, school committee, teachers, everybody's got to get on board with this. And so we do hear it from staff, but if there is a specific concern about a specific room, we'll try to ameliorate and, you know, do some focus testing. And I think it's like, you know, if we see visible stains on ceiling tiles, get them out, you know? Wherever we can replace rugs, let's get them out. Let's soft surfaces, upholstery, let's make sure they're cleaned regularly. Talked about the auditorium at Williams. That's a concern for staff. I heard that from staff, and I've heard that from school committee, from community members, right?
So that's the concrete floor. That's a problem.
But those seats haven't been changed since.
Right, but the air quality problem is actually the unsealed concrete in that room. So the moisture comes up from the ground there. And a couple of the big things that came up for Williams were the ventilators being sort of recirculating dirt, particulate matter, I don't know what else, but lots of things that shouldn't be pre-filtered, meaning that it's in the univans in each room. And so the filter can't, can't handle getting rid of it. Those disposable filters aren't really even meant to be in those ventilators. And the problem with the air conditioning is that even when they're off, they're causing an air quality issue, which was shocking to me. I had no idea. So the options that he proposed were, you know, you either have to disassemble those units in their entirety on a regular basis and have them cleaned thoroughly, or remove them. So it would be interesting at some point to know, people, you know, the.
Well, if you ask me on a 95-degree day in June, whether we want the air conditioners or not.
Well, obviously, on a, right, right.
Both sides of that, but.
But you sort of, you sort of weigh the pros and cons.
Absolutely.
You know, of, you know, a cleaner, potentially cleaner air, getting rid of those vents, or getting rid of those air conditioning units versus, you know, you might have a we.
Maybe this is my age, but 23, 7th grade boys in a 95-degree classroom versus.
You've got to go to Glenbrook for a few days.
I understand, I know one that doesn't have air conditioning.
But they would take it if they could take it, from what I've heard over there.
It's such a.
Regardless of air quality, but they'd take those. I don't know if that's a good thing, but I know they would. I don't know if that's a good thing, but I know they would, I would too, probably.
Yeah, I mean, from an air, it's, there's the comfort, and then there's the air quality. Obviously, they're both important.
And I think, you know, I mean, many of us also understand, we live in an old building.
Yeah.
You know, so if you're talking temperature, room to room, my room is very toasty because I'm on a corner near the furnace.
I noticed that about your room, I was in there.
It's great, wonderful. But then you'll go three doors down, it's a little chillier, well, they don't have all the, the heat source that I have in my room. In an older building, we understand there's going to be temperature changes.
Yeah.
And actually, I think the students really don't mind that sometimes either. You know, they get a little warm, you know, you get too warm, you get a little snoozy, and then the cooler air wakes them up a little bit. So, John, I can see what you were saying before, because having gone to Long Island High School and dealt with the heater in the window, and which classroom is which, you know? But to answer the question, anecdotally, we haven't heard a lot, or I haven't heard a lot through staff, but I'm sure any of these studies, and they start to get the results as they filter through, no pun intended, that I'm sure a conversation will be started just by that.
I, I think it's really helpful, I just wanted to put this out there, to parents, to students, and to staff, it's helpful to know if people are feeling not well in any sort of way, you know, the school, the school committee wants to know that, superintendent wants to know that. I think a lot of people don't want to speak up, they think they're the only ones, but if people are having, you know, feeling extremely fatigued, having headaches, stomach aches, there's a lot of sort of transient symptoms that you can get. And if, if staff's feeling that way, or students are feeling that way, we just, we need that feedback, it's really critical for us in terms of moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can certainly ask them.
Yeah, thank you.
So before you leave, I just want to, your comment about the budget...
Right.
And understanding, you know, the realities of the budget. I guess the way I'm kind of looking at it is, our budget is tight enough where if we over-allocate in any place, we have to under-allocate somewhere else. And that's kind of the way this has been playing out since I've been on the committee. So last year, I really, I could see that we weren't over-allocating in any way in the middle school that year. You know, we were going to have class sizes that were going to be way too high. This year, it, it looks, based on everything that the superintendent's given me and the finance subcommittee, that we would be over-allocating in that one area, which means we have to under-allocate somewhere else. And so it's, that's a real tough conversation, which we talked about for a long time. I mean, it's not an easy decision. And I agree with you that one way or the other, we've got to make a decision.
So whether it's today or the next meeting... I mean, if I was to be the junior president, I'll tell you to keep the team.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not going to want to lose the staff at all.
Right, right, right.
But being realistic is being realistic as well.
Yeah.
And I heard Michelle's concern about, you know, with the algebra numbers, and would there be a way to tuck in a section if need be? And I heard Marty, I mean, it is a puzzle. You know, when you understand scheduling, you can understand that, okay, how would you, how would that work? If you have no understanding of scheduling out there, you may just be, how would that work? But it is, it's a jigsaw puzzle with many same colors.
So we will definitely make a decision one way or the other, this meeting or the next one, I would say.
And I'll just say, to your point, I do think there are issues with cutting this team this year. I think it really needs to go one more year, I think it's a leap of faith, I think there's a lot of risk to it. And when I look at $120,000 for technology, and I look at teaching, I'm going to go with teaching all day long. When we look at the end of the year and we talk at July, and thinking, okay, well, if we're in trouble, we'll handle it then, I want to be handling technology and buying an iPad versus trying to find a new teacher after having let some go. So for me, I need more information before I can vote on this. I need to know, I do understand that the numbers have gone down, that we're dealing with an eighth grade where the numbers are higher and not a seventh, not a seventh grade. So I would like to get more information as to if we, just different scenarios of how this plays out, because right now, I basically have one where we're trying to fill in these holes. But I'd like some scenarios of, you know, if we kept this team, or if we kept more than one from the five, or, I, I need more information, because this is a big leap of faith, there are risks involved, and we are talking about $120,000 in technology and $160,000 in staff. So when we talk about budget and priorities, I put teachers before tech, so.
Michelle?
I guess on that topic, and I don't know if you can answer this, but we looked at the Glenbrook numbers in finance sub, and I thought that they looked okay, but hearing Nicole say 28, I don't remember seeing any classes that high, I thought that they were lower.
Not this year, she might have been referring to last year, I don't think there's anything...
I think I heard her say it was Pat, Sue Newton's past numbers this year.
I think it was last year.
Yeah, so, I guess, I'm bringing it up because if they're pressed, and, you know, you've got some sessions are pressed, is there adding one more staff member, is there a way to...
That's a good question.
...alleviate that, you know, those bubbles, if there are.
Maintaining one or adding many, maintaining two?
I'm misunderstanding what you're saying. Some other formula than, than what we have right now, where we're keeping more staff and spreading them out to some other problem areas that we might have.
I think our question too is talking about this team, and it was a travel team when the numbers were different, and it wasn't ideal, but when we're talking about cutting, and maybe if we do have a need in Glenbrook, I, I think these are scenarios I'd like to explore more, because I just have one real scenario here, and it's cutting it, so...
And to your point, I mean, I value teaching over technology as well. And, and, you know, we have teachers that are interested in bringing technology, we have, we have unreliable obsolete equipment, and that needs to be replaced. We have teachers that are, that are scrambling to find the tools that they need to teach kids. And so it's not about necessarily hardware. And, and I think there is opportunity cost. If we, if we go back and we add in some additional teaching, I think it's going to, we're going to be going down the same road that we were going down last year, where there are a million different scenarios. And I would want this committee to give me some very, very, very specific expectations on what scenario you want. And we'll come back with that, but if you even add one teacher into that matrix, it, it's going to create a lot of unevenness, and you're going to be dividing 130 into seven or eight instead of, instead of six. So I, I think, you know, what I've heard from the community is the importance of, of health and wellness. I think we're addressing that in some degree here, I'd love to do more. But, you know, I, I think, I'd like to think that this budget that we presented to you does respect the needs of teachers, and it is targeted to the needs of children. And, you know, it's not, the dust is not entirely settled on this in terms of how we would staff this, you know? But I think we're pretty dialed in as an administrative team. And if, and if you're asking us to go back and add another teacher, where? What, what discipline, what grade? What are your parameters in terms of class size, what's too big, what's too small? Because that's why we got down this road last year, and I don't think it was helpful to anybody, I think it was, it really undermined morale. I went to the Williams staff meeting the other day and had a, you know, I said, hey, I'm available to talk with you about your concerns. And, you know, that's, that's something that's really important to me, is to be really respectful of the teachers in these situations.
Russ has been reading, and then Michelle.
The problem is, if I was going to answer that question right now, based on the numbers I saw, I would say add another teacher to Glenbrook. And that's a whole different conversation, and I don't think it's necessary, because I don't think Glenbrook needs another teacher based on their class sizes, class sizes either. But I don't think, based on the numbers and the, the needs of the two schools, that Williams, you know, if anything, if there's going to be another teacher, I would say it would be Glenbrook.
I guess I'd like to go back to the administrative team and say, okay, the, the committee has decided to give us an additional FTE. I would love it, right? I mean, that would be fantastic, you get five FTEs, 10 FTEs, whatever you think the select board and the town meeting can tolerate. And we'll come back to you with some recommendations, you know, like, if I went to the administrative team and said, we, we have an opportunity to add one more position to this budget, what would they come back to you with? You saw some of the future considerations, coaching, elementary science kits, elementary health, I mean, there's a lot of needs out there. I don't think this, frankly, I don't think this would be at the top of the priority list, and I think you need to hear that. But if, if that's the direction you want to go, then give us very specific direction on that, so that we don't go down this same road again, that I think was really hurtful. And it's strung out the discussion over months.
I didn't follow what you were saying about this, what did you mean by this being on top of the priority?
I'm saying if, if, if the committee said, there is room, we, we will add to this budget, we will seek a, a higher amount from the general fund, $570,000 additional over last year. In other words, one more FTE. Where would we plug in that FTE when we think about the needs pre-K to 12?
My guess is, based on this year and last year, it would be elementary health.
It would, it would certainly, it would certainly not be...
I mean, it'd probably be elementary health.
It certainly would not be Williams' middle school staff, I mean, I just need to be really...
Oh, okay, seriously.
That's, that's my take, I would want to talk to the team about that, this is not, we make these decisions as a team, I think, I, I, I hope that is visible to you. I wouldn't bring anything forward to you that the team didn't support, that isn't reflective of what they want. I mean, as much as Kathy would say, yes, teachers were rather 20 over 25, if we lower the Williams middle numbers, we're going to hear from teachers in other, at other grade spans who are teaching, we're going to hear from teachers at Glenbrook, we're going to hear from teachers at the high school, we're going to hear from, I mean, we saw some of the elementary numbers would be higher than what we would have at the middle school, and that's not right.
Michelle's been waiting a long time.
So what I wanted to see was, do you have the class sizes for next year's Glenbrook? And do they, are they higher than 24? Are they in that same range?
It will be, the, the number of eighth graders leaving is very similar to the number of sixth graders coming in, and so what we will see next year will be very, very similar to what we have this year. And I could pull that up.
Yeah, I guess, again, I'm just concerned because I heard the 28, and I thought we were staying below...
She said last year, I'm pretty sure she said that, something like last year.
It's not something that we...
Yeah, I don't think it's that high.
And I think that was around algebra, which you get into that leveling, which can skew your numbers a little higher or lower because of having five sections of, say, eighth grade math, you have to pick, are we going to have three pre-algebra and two algebra, or the other way around? So it's based on numbers, so you can skew it because of the leveling.
I know Glenbrook has more kids in sixth grade this year than Williams does, but even with that, I don't think, we looked at that and find it, so I just can't remember off the top of my head, but...
I felt like it was lower than Williams, so I wasn't concerned.
Glenbrook this year, there are five classes at 25, this is, you know, this was a snapshot I took earlier in the year, so this may not be precisely what we're dealing with right now, but five at 25, there is at least 10 at 24, and there are at least probably 15 at 23, and quite a few at 22. I mean...
But that's almost, I mean, it's higher than Williams, but not...
It's in the range, it's comparable.
And nothing is expected to be bigger next year?
We do not expect it to be bigger. We expect that, we haven't run it the way we did with Williams, and if you wanted us to do that, we certainly could, I don't, you know? But we would expect it to be very similar.
If you look at the enrollment that you gave out, the current, if you look at Glenbrook's sixth grade currently this year, which is your next year's seventh graders, there's 110 students, so you would divide that by the five sections. So, you know that. And seventh grade being 111, that will be next year's eighth grade, divide that into five sections, because of your class size. So they're about, so their seventh and eighth will be right around the same.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. Just, can I say one thing before I go?
Absolutely, yep.
You know, the, the teachers, these five, have, all, they're all new to Williams this year, they have been phenomenal. And the reason I say make your decision early is because they all will get hired somewhere, because they are exceptional new teachers, younger teachers, some have taught five or six years, some are brand new. But what a wonderful experience we've had having these five in our building this year. The students love them, you know, they've brought a nice, great new energy to Williams. So I just, I want to make sure publicly I say that they are awesome, no matter what happens to them in the future. You know, we've loved having them this year.
Yeah.
And, you know, as I said, don't vacillate, just make a decision so they can figure out where their lives are going.
Yeah, that's been my number one concern all along, Marty and I have talked about this, he's heard me say this a zillion times, and sometimes I forget to say it at the meetings, all the things that, you know, I process.
Oh, sure.
I want people to know as soon as they, as soon as we can possibly tell them, because I, I don't want people waiting and not knowing, that's a horrible place to be in your career. So I appreciate you saying that.
And we've heard the same thing about them.
Yes.
We've talked about that in finance sub, too.
Wonderful to hear.
Yep.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we can look at some other scenarios, and, and I, I think we've given you everything I possibly can give you right now, in terms of what Williams would look like next year with the staffing that we proposed. I don't know that I can explain that any, I don't think I can bring you back any information on that. However, if there are other scenarios you want us to look at, we could do that.
So it's getting close to 9:30, and I think we really need to decide whether, you know, what we want to do, what we want to ask, specifically what we want to ask of Marty for next week, if we're going to wait on a vote, or if there are people on the committee who feel strongly that they want to vote tonight, I just need feedback from everybody, when you want to vote, and if not tonight, what specifically do we want, what kind of information do we want for next week? Michael?
So I'm going to be traveling, I'm not going to be here next week, so I will not be able to vote on the budget unless we vote on it this week, but I understand that, you know, there are objections on the committee. So I, at this point, I will say that if I was to be here next week, I would express my support of the budget as submitted by the superintendent, that I do not support adding additional funding for, you know, things that the town should pay for on their own, and the town should be game to help us pay for, especially prior to July 1st. I think we can kind of get the ball rolling outside of this budget. But that being said, I, I support the budget as it is, and, you know, I understand that there will most likely be a delay, just given the concerns that other members have.
Thank you.
Will you be available to call in?
I'm going to be in Israel, so...
Be a little tough.
A little tough.
Wow, that's exciting.
You also have a meeting set up for the ninth, I don't know if that was, you got to help me out with this day, whether it was considered to be a snow day, or that was set up as a meeting to vote in case we didn't vote tonight, is that...
Exactly.
Yeah. So you'd have to decide what you wanted to do with your Thursday meeting, is that...
I guess that depends on how many inches of snow are yet.
With the weather that's coming in, that will be an issue.
Yeah, I think we kind of need to plan on Tuesday. Diane, go ahead.
I just want to point out that the town budget is supposed to be due to the town manager on Friday, according to the budget calendar.
That's, I guess the question.
I just want to point it out.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a good point, I was going to get there, too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like a legal requirement, I mean, they want us to do that?
I think we're within a comfortable timeframe on Tuesday.
It's, we're real early.
Yeah.
Well, without Mr. Mazza, I couldn't, other than knowing the calendar, and it's supposed to be due to the town manager on Friday.
I think if you were to ask the town manager for two business days of leeway to decide the final budget, he would most likely agree with you, or he'd most likely allow that. I think last year, he gave us two extra days.
Yeah, so let's do that before we cancel the ninth.
But I would, I would suggest that either the superintendent or the chair be in contact and communicate the state of our budget and the discussions of the committee to the town manager.
I mean, does any...
You don't have to raise your hand.
Does anybody want to vote tonight? I mean, is that, we're kind of assuming nobody wants to, but...
I mean, I do, but I'm just reading the room.
Well, no, I don't, I, I hear what you're saying, Michael, I, the only, I, I, I support the budget, and I support the staffing decisions, and I, and I really appreciate the time and effort and work that went into this budget by the admin team, all the principals, and the entire admin team. It wasn't just, you know, a spontaneous kind of, hey, let's do this, let's do that, you know, there was a lot, a lot of thought and analysis that went into it, and I think it's a really excellent budget. That's not to say that any budget's perfect, I think, you know, we can always analyze anything in a budget, you know, with the air quality issues and the, and the staffing concerns, and, but in terms of where we're at, and some of the comments that were made by Russ and by Michael tonight, where we're, where we're at in the process of trying to figure out the air quality issues with the middle schools, I, I think it is too early, and I certainly don't want to be, you know, pulling anything that would put, put the select board off in terms of, you know, we're trying to vacuum into a corner, kind of move for the... trying to vacuum into a corner kind of move for the budget. So, I don't have a pro, I'm not opposed to voting the budget tonight.
I would also just kind of quickly, just to jump on that, if we don't want, we have the opportunity essentially up until town meeting, and even after town meeting, to amend our budget.
To amend our budget, that is a very good point.
And so, if there are concerns over $50,000 for air quality testing, then I think that could be addressed after we have a better sense of where they are, but I think that, at least what I'm hearing, especially from Stephanie, that her concerns are a lot more significant than $50,000 for air quality testing, and I think, it seems like she probably wants more time to consider those.
Russ.
Okay, so I'm just trying to be practical about this. I think, the air quality, I'm, I think it's an issue we need to look at very carefully and figure out what we're doing with it, but in my mind, it's unrelated to this particular budget.
Me, too.
The issues that Stephanie has raised, I think are valid issues. The question is, if we're directing the superintendent as a committee to go and come up with another scenario, we need to tell him what that scenario is, so that he can go look at it. It can't just be generally, you know, look at everything. It has to be something we direct him to do. If we don't do that, then I'd say it doesn't make sense to delay a vote, because nothing new is going to happen between now and the next meeting.
I think, I think we need a motion on the floor to.
Yeah, I'll make it.
Voting the budget tonight, and then we can have discussion, vote on whether we're going to vote on the budget.
I move that the school committee approve the FY 2018 proposed school department budget in the amount of $36,511,255 and 44 cents, with a general fund allocation of $33,669,977.57, and submit this amount to the town manager for inclusion in the 2018 annual town meeting warrant, Tuesday, May 9th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, so now we can decide whether we want to vote on this tonight. Russ?
I just thought something that's really obvious, but it took me a while to get there. The town doesn't care what we do with our number. If the issue is how we spend our number, you know, whether we do it middle school team or we do some other scenario.
True.
I don't know that we need to wait on voting the number.
That's true.
Unless we're going to increase the number, and do both, technology and middle school, but if it's really a balance.
That's a very good point.
Then, you know, it doesn't matter.
That's a very good point.
So, I have some questions, some information was given in this presentation that wasn't before. Tom is not here, I have questions about the technology piece, I have some more questions about how we would fill the four sections that are in Williams, based on the fact that new information was presented tonight. Tom is not here to answer some of the questions. For some people at home, this is the first time they've seen the new information in the slides. I'd like to give it some time in case parents want to get back to me as well, but additionally, I have some questions that I need answered to comfortably say, you know, yes to the budget.
But is it, is it the overall amount of the budget, or how it's allocated?
I would be afraid to say yes to the overall amount, although I don't believe that that is really the issue, it is more the allocation. But I don't want to, I don't want to say for sure, especially without Tom here, but at this point, I think it's the allocation, and I just need some more questions answered to feel comfortable.
So I think it might make sense to vote on the budget tonight, and then have the budget on the agenda for next week, and we can either vote, if we need to, we can vote to amend it, or we can vote, we can vote to reallocate funds.
What would be the purpose of that?
The purpose of what?
Voting on it, and just not waiting till, give it, we had the hearing tonight, people heard it, just giving it a week and then.
I don't, it doesn't matter to me, it's up to you guys.
I don't really care either way, either.
We just have to decide.
We can't go, what I do not want to do is what we did last year, because that was embarrassing. So, what we need to do is, if we have some other plan that's not this plan, that we want Marty to look at, let's tell him, because otherwise, we're going to get to the next meeting, and we're still not going to get to a decision, because we're not going to know what we're comparing, so.
Sue and Michelle.
I just, I want you to know that every scenario that you can think of, we've thought of three additional. I mean, we toil over this, we've been at it since November, so, you know, it's heartfelt work, and it's disheartening work, both.
Yeah.
And I feel like we've brought to you the best that we feel like we can bring to you, and so if you want us to go back and do something different, that's great, but we've probably already thought of something different, and, so, I don't know if you can speak to that.
I appreciate that.
But, I mean, we have run every number, every scenario, everything that we possibly can think of, and you can vote for that, but, you know, we've toiled and over it for hours and hours and hours, and continue to do so, and so I want you to make sure that, you know, we have, you know, we want to have faith in us in that process.
I appreciate you saying that, Sue. I think that's very valid and authentic and important, thank you.
I believe you.
It's a big team of people that work hard and, you know, together, and bring forth what they feel is best for the district, the kids, and the staff, and so, I just want you to remember that as you have the discussions about what you want us to change.
And as a very quick aside, I think that that point that you made is very overlooked, and we owe them a lot of thanks.
Michelle was waiting to talk.
That's all I have to say.
So, I was going to say that, I know I raised some questions about the staffing, and I think that when Marty said that the administrative team really felt strongly that this was the best solution.
Right.
I feel more comfortable with this. It's hard to, you know, have the final deciding vote. I definitely know what you said, it's just that, like, how do I sleep at night without knowing that I also went through it? So, I, I don't think there are any more scenarios that I could ask you to play out. I think you basically said, you know, there are a few insurance policies that we have if this doesn't work out, so I feel comfortable knowing that, you know, you've got some backup plans, so that would be my, the only thing I really came in here with any hesitation on was that. I feel more comfortable voting on it now. And then I'll echo what Most have said already in regards to the $50,000 added to the budget, while I completely appreciate and understand the notion of doing that, I think it's too early, and I think we should wait, because we always have the opportunity to, I think, from everything I've seen so far, how they've responded to us and everything, I don't think they'll need to do that, I think they're going to be very responsive with what ever plan is determined, so.
Okay. John?
The motion on the floor is to approve the budget as presented. I'm going to vote no on that, I think it's an excessively frugal budget, and I think we ought to take a look at air quality for the reasons that I indicated earlier, and I don't want to lay off teachers, so I want to take a look at how those numbers work out. I think you made a very good point about, come September, you can always find technology, as one who actually had to go and find teachers late in the year, it's very difficult, so I'm going to vote no on this motion.
Stephanie.
And I think what I'm struggling with is how we're going to fill these sections and make sure we don't impact education. We have, when this was argued last year, I think everyone believed that we had one more year with this larger class, and so, the question is, do we wait that one year and not have to try to plug these holes? So, voting it through at this point is tough for me, because it is the leap of faith, and I know that in the end, it is going to be, okay, if we can't do it, we do need to hire another person, and then the question is, we are late in the game, who are we going to find? Who are we going to find at a .2, .5, or whatever we're trying to plug in however way? So that's my big question, is the impact of trying to take teachers from within if things change, and I appreciated Jean's talking about the math, and that was helpful, because I didn't have that information about how it impacts. A lot of the information may have been discussed, but I don't have it, that's why I wanted to have, and then I don't know that parents are aware of what's going on, and if they have input, I want to give them time to let me know if they have concerns about any of this. Typically, Mike, you have the hearing, and then you have a period of time so people can let you know, and then you.
You're supposed to come here and let us know, that's the problem.
Yes.
You just come here and matter.
Yeah.
It's last, last year, we had a lot of people, nobody showed up.
Right. So I have worries about how we're going to fill those sections.
Can I say that we could wait until April, and we won't be able to provide you any more information about how those sections will be covered? There is, there is no way that, because, and again, you're talking about, we're down to like three sections of one school's schedule that we're talking about. There are hundreds and hundreds of sections across this district that we don't know right now who's going to teach what. I mean, so what, what we're debating is, is really, in many respects, very normal, very typical for what administrators are going through at this time of year. Right now, this is about setting the budget and setting a staff level that we can work with. We feel confident that with this budget, we can provide improved level of services over FY 17. That's what I'm really excited about.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I never thought, when I came into this job, I had heard some forecasts of what we were going to be looking at for FY 18.
Yeah.
This is an improvement budget. It does not diminish services.
It is.
At the middle school and core instruction, it improves services for, for social emotional needs of students, and it addresses some very real technology needs that we have. That is just going to be, if you put that off, you're just going to be kicking the can down the road.
It's a huge liability.
It's, I mean, that's a very real need, that, you know, we're fortunate that we have a lot of devices, but we've got to get moving on that.
I agree.
Now, so, there is no additional information I can provide in terms of how we're going to cover that, other than a lot of the things we've already kind of gone round and round and round with. And if you said, well, this committee's going to vote a budget that would include three additional FTEs, I'd say I'm all for it, that is excellent, I would love it, and there's no superintendent who wouldn't be excited about a budget where a school committee said, here's three more teachers than you're recommending, bring it on, I love that. But, again, I'd go back to my team and say, all right, we have an opportunity, where should we make this investment? That's, that's where I would want to start, and I think that's where you would want me to start.
That's right.
You know, I mean, that's, I don't.
It wouldn't be generated by the school committee, it would be generated by the admin.
And it shouldn't be generated by me, this is our team decision, so.
Russ?
I think at the end of the day, though, I think Sue's correct, that we have all the information, the team as a whole, I mean, this isn't just Marty, this is, the whole team is telling us, this is the priorities we have this year.
Right.
Last year, the problem was, and the reason people were talking about another year, is because the solution of just keeping one of them wasn't brought up. We talked about travel teams, and we talked about all these other things, but I think that this is a way where we don't get exactly what we want, but we get a number of other things that will improve education, and also the lives of all those other teachers, I mean, the technology that's spread out amongst all those teachers and kids that are going to be using the technology.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, it's a tough thing to do, but I think at the end of the day, I believe that administration is giving us what they think is their best scenario for the long middle public schools. Now, if they're completely wrong, then obviously we have a conversation, which you know I always do, but, you know, I'm thinking, you know, based on everything I've seen, I'm comfortable that this is the best scenario that we can come up with.
I'm actually glad, you said that, and Marty said that, because it really brought me back to the moment when I had the phone conversation with Marty, you know, we've been having a lot of conversations about budget, and I said, I can't support a budget that's just going to be slashing, slashing, slashing. I need, I need to hear from the administrators what they want, what they need, please go back to them, please have these conversations, and he and I have been in really close contact about that, and I was thrilled when he came forward and said, these are the things that the teachers, the administrators are saying that they need for their schools, the social emotional component is gaping hole, this is something, I said, because this school committee wants to go to the town and advocate for the needs of the schools. We don't want to just go out publicly and say, here's all of our cuts, you know, we want, we want to be advocates for the schools, we want to keep our eye on continuous improvement, and so, I'm glad you said that, it really helped to sort of bring me back to the origin and where we came from, and I feel so good about how this evolved, because we really did start out with, oh my gosh, this is going to be so bad, and now to be able to sit here and say, we might be able to include these adjustment counselors, we might be able to include this, support, you know, this, continue the science curriculum, these sorts of things are great, they're eye on continuous improvement, and I 100% do not see this budget as technology over staffing or class size at all, I think the class sizes are 100% appropriate and acceptable, and I think that we've gone over the numbers over and over and over again, and I think Marty and the team have done an excellent job, and Tom, of producing all of these analysis for the committee, and this tireless effort that they've put into this budget, so I will support, I will vote yes and vote in favor of the budget tonight. Is there anything else that, Liz, you have a question?
Do we have a joint meeting again with this left board?
Not scheduled currently.
Oh, okay. So I thought maybe we could put the.
We could schedule one.
The air quality on that agenda, and then we could address it there.
I think we do, I think that's a great suggestion, we need to come up with a plan on our end first, and I think, and I think we can generate a little bit more detail from next week's meeting on that topic, and then request a joint meeting, that's a great idea. Stephanie?
You know, I struggle with this, and it's not to discount any of the work that was done, and you have information that I probably don't have, and that's why, you know, I was looking to continue it. To say that this budget doesn't diminish education is assuming that we're going to find staff to fill four core subjects, and it's assuming that if we have to pull two staff members, it's not going to affect those classes, so it's based on faith, hope, and, you know, if we're looking for a part-time staff member in July, it's going to be hard to get, so. Also, in listening to Admin, and listening to Taylor, and listening to Kathy, you know, they're saying, I understand the budget, and I understand, you know, what you're doing based on budgetary constraints, and my problem is, we're cutting staff, trying to fill holes, taking a risk, and we're buying $120,000 in technology that I am not convinced that we need next year. It could hold off another year while we keep a team in place, not try to have to fill the holes, not take the risk with education. I haven't heard a solid argument as to why we need that technology for next year. I understand the iPads are outdated, I'm not even clear how much they're used, particularly at the elementary level, we have a lot of iPads, we're moving more towards Chromebooks. Yes, we have huge technology needs in terms of hardware, and we saw that Capitol presentation in the slide, but right now, we're talking about making a cut at the chalkboard and taking a risk, and we've got $120,000 in technology that I'm not convinced that we need next year. And so, that's why, you know, if we didn't have that 120, and we were going to look to have to cut somewhere else where it was really, I knew it was going to impact education, I knew, then, then we wouldn't necessarily be having this conversation, but I don't believe that that technology, or I have not heard the argument, that that technology impacts education enough to take that over these teacher cuts. That's why I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it at this point.
I guess the flip side to that is, I haven't heard from administration that the middle school team is, everything's ranked by priority, essentially, so, in the ranking, because of the numbers at that, at Williams in particular, and it's going to be true at elementary very soon, we're going to be looking at the same thing there, because the numbers just don't justify the number of teachers we have.
Right.
And so, last year, I was completely against it, even though administration at the time, I think, you know, it was, it came up as one of the top priorities, but, priorities, but. but top things to cut. And I didn't agree last year because I thought it was, that was a risk. It would've been a risk. This year, there is always risk, but it's a much lower, lower level risk here. I mean, it's, last year, I just didn't think it was fully, there were issues that couldn't be solved at that point in time.
Right.
But this year, because the numbers are lower and because we have a different scenario as far as staffing, I, I'm a lot more comfortable with it this time around, which I wasn't last year.
Jean?
Can I just clarify?
Can I call a question?
Oh, yeah, Jean had one thing to say and then you can call the question.
So I just wanted to, looking at the numbers, if you kept your current staffing, which seems to be what you're talking about, keeping that team, your class size in seventh grade drops to 14 and your class size in eighth grade is around 15 point something. So that would be across every section at Williams, which 14 is lower than almost, I believe, every elementary classroom that we have in district. So that's the impact of keeping
Well, it also creates some buzz. It's not like eight or nine.
Right, correct.
It's, it was very low.
John?
I'd like to call a question.
So moved.
Before we vote, though, do we have to disclose if we have kids in the system because we're voting on the budget? I thought last year, we had to make a disclosure.
You had to on the specific staff reduction because it was a separate vote.
The answer's that it's no.
But your job is to vote on the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I would be voting, but do I have to disclose that I have children in the system?
No. Not on the budget.
I think it was kindergarten, too, because I disclosed that.
Something, yeah, we had to disclose something last year.
They take a view that if it's part of the normal course of your duty, which voting on a budget is, then you don't need to disclose.
Okay, I don't know why I had to last year. That's the only.
All those in favor of the budget as presented? All those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Could I just add, though, that if parents do have issues, there's no reason they can't come to the next meeting and tell us. And then we can, we can always consider things. But I think we needed to vote the budgets.
And I wanted to, to add that, too, if parents had concerns. And my voting it down is not necessarily reflective of my disagreement with the amount. It is just that I didn't feel comfortable at this point. I wanted to gather more information.
So, does that mean we're canceling the Thursday meeting?
So, we don't need the Thursday meeting and then also, I needed to, we, we sort of overschedule.
Do we need Tuesday's meeting?
Well, here's what I'm proposing. I'd like to propose that we have, we keep Tuesday's meeting and we cancel the following meeting, which is for the 28th. So we have, we're gonna sort of front-load our meetings a little bit. So we, we already had extra meetings scheduled that we don't need. So let, if we, if we continue, next week, we keep that meeting. We're gonna talk about the indoor air quality issues then. We don't then need the meeting again on the 28th.
So then we meet on the 14th of March would be the next one?
Right.
Which is Valentine's Day.
Right. We get, we get to meet on Valentine's Day.
That's not a joint meeting.
At, at this point, that's not a joint meeting. That's just a regular school committee meeting.
Jess, I won't be here either. So physically present, you're down, too. Just wanna make sure you have.
What day?
The 14th. Michael's not here and I'm not here. So I just wanna make sure that everybody else or that you have a call.
Oh, the 14th, the February, yeah, yeah, yeah. You're not gonna be here the 14th.
Letting you know, yes.
Okay, okay. Yep, so we're good the 14th, so.
I don't know, Liz sneezed, so she might be down for the count next Tuesday.
So for the purposes of scheduling and for the purposes of clarity, we do not have a meeting on Thursday. We have a meeting next Tuesday, Valentine's Day, the 14th. If you wanna bring Valentine's to hand out, you may, as long as you have one for everybody. And then we will not meet on February 28th, Tuesday, the 28th. And I believe we need to adjourn into executive session.
Is Marty gonna give an update on the SOIs?
Oh, I skipped right over you.
30 seconds or less?
Yeah, you have less than 30 seconds.
Less than 30. So, the, the thought was to take some of the input that we've heard from the select board, maybe incorporate that input into the SOI, bring it back to you at your meeting for a, a vote. One of the things that has, will have to happen is you'll have to vote a priority SOI. When that process is complete, you go back to the select board with it, with a final, final, final version of the SOI.
So will that be on our agenda for next Tuesday?
That would be the plan. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the 14th.
I'm already working on that.
Before we go into executive session, can I just, around this air quality issue, I don't have, you know, we're running late. I don't wanna belabor any points. Could I just ask you, in your capacity, to sort of have a cursory conversation with Stephen and Marie about our options, you know, and kind of feel them out and, you know, maybe take it from there?
Yep.
I think, and I think, I mean, we can talk to them, but I think it's gonna be more meaningful to talk to them after next meeting because next meeting, Marty's gonna come back and give us more substantive feedback about what happened at the meeting on Friday. And I think we need to hash out a little bit as a committee, what we wanna see accomplished now, what Marty's recommending that we accomplish now, and what we're gonna go, you know, talk to the select board about. So we really need to figure that out before we do have the conversations.
Yeah, no problem.
All righty.
And the reason for executive session, one of the reasons would require Mr. Mazza. The other reason is, is no longer in place, so.
So we don't have an executive?
Right, unless.
I don't have any more.
So no need for.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I just, under suggestions for future agenda?
Oh, yes.
I did want to mention, after having gone to the Equities Symposium, and suggest that maybe I do a very brief report or quick presentation of some highlights because it was really good and a lot of.
Can we put that on the agenda for next week?
Oh, gosh, no.
I mean, no, not next week?
I'm not writing yet.
Oh, not next week?
Not next week, no. So I've gotta put it together, but yes. Not right in the middle of budget.
Wait, Diane, our next meeting in, what's our next meeting? So.
It looks into March 12th or something.
March 14th.
Sometime in March, but it doesn't matter exactly.
March 14th, March 14th, okay.
But I just wanted to put that out that I, I would like to, yeah.
Well, you need to let Diane know when you wanna do it.
Okay.
And that's, that's wonderful. Yeah, that's wonderful. I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Well, someone has to make the motion.
I need to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everybody.